Good afternoon and welcome. We're gonna go ahead and get started this afternoon. Welcome to everybody. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. It is Tuesday, September 28th, 5 o'clock PM, and we're gonna go ahead and start with our regular board meeting. I want to just say, welcome to all of my fellow board members, to Dr. Stubblefield, to all of our staff, Mr. Goheen, all of our guests that are present with us in person and online. Thank you for joining us this afternoon. Before we continue on, we'll go ahead and read our board norms and protocols as we do at every board meeting. As a board, we agree to respect the differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. As a reminder, if you're here in person, please make sure you are muted on your laptops and that your camera is off unless you are presenting in order to protect bandwidth, and make sure your phones are silenced at this moment as well. Thank you. Ms. Smith, would you please do a roll call?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, present.
Dr. Yeager.
Dr. Yeager, present.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would now actually make a motion to add two executive sessions to tonight's meeting, the first being an executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exemption for employer-employee negotiations under coma, and that being the first session that we go into. The second addition would be to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under coma.
Moved.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Dr. Yeager, yes.
Thank you.
Great. Motion passes. Thank you. And now entertain a motion to approve tonight's amended agenda.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Dr. Yeager, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Motion passes. Okay, so we will start off our meeting with our first agenda item. We have our Employee of the Month recognition.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, Mr. President and Dr. Stubblefield. I always get to come with good news and fun, so I'm here again to talk through our Employees of the Month for September 2021. We actually have two this month. Our first one is Rosa Chavez. She is the ESL aide at Morris Early Childhood Center, and her nomination came from the school nurse Cassie Boiderski. And just to summarize the nomination, because you can read it on the board notes, but really, we're celebrating Rosa as a really amazing example of how effective time management works. And so, this nomination specifically referred to the month of August and her partnership with our nursing team at the school to ensure that all the parents fully understood the important medical information that was being passed regarding COVID and other things that are happening as school got back into session. And so, we'd like to recognize her for her good work there and keeping everyone safe. Our second nomination, Ms. Veronica Pino. She is our administrative support professional at the KCK PD, and she, this nomination came from one of her coworkers, Jamia Warren, and of course, Chief Horn. And so, this one highlights Veronica's coordination of the district's danger notification and crisis management system. It's called Safe Defend. So, over the summer, she really worked as a liaison between the staff, the vendor that helps get that installed, and then building administrators to make sure that all the data was in there so that that system could be utilized by the district. You know, there was an implementation, a system enrollment, and all the troubleshooting that went along with that. So, we want to congratulate her for her work there. Know that that was not easy in the midst of COVID as well. So, just want to congratulate both of those ladies on their accomplishments, and congratulations.
Great. Thank you, and congratulations to Rosie and to Veronica. Thank you. Next up on our agenda, Mr. Linkus will invite you up to present Student of the Month.
Thank you, Board. President Lopez, Vice President Clark, fellow members of the Board, Dr. Stubblefield. This is always one of the most fun times to come up, and we haven't done it in person for over a year. So, if I'm a little rusty, I apologize in advance, but I think the families are gonna enjoy being here. But we have nominations for Student of the Month every month, and we choose a student from the ECE, elementary, middle, and high school level. So, we're happy to celebrate those students and their selection. So, the first student who I'd like to recognize is from the NCO, the North Central Office ECC, and they were nominated by Bridget Schenk, who's a paraprofessional over there. The student is Benjamin Edneen Bonia. So, Benjamin, if you, your staff member, it looks like mom's with you. If you want to come up, come on up this way. And I get the privilege of putting this medal on this young man for his fine accomplishment, and then we'll let the staff member brag about the great things he's doing.
I feel so shocked. All right. Benji has rocked his first month in preschool. He's aware of the people around him, and he is always ready to jump in when he sees the need. He's been very in control of his body, keeping calm, and following directions during our learning times, then expending energy appropriately and safely during centers and recess. He's really stood out as an example in our class, and we are excited to see him continue to grow and learn throughout the year.
as you grow in our district, and one day will be one of the high school nominees. So,
Our next winner is from the elementary level, and they are a first grader at ME Pearson Elementary, and they were nominated by their classroom teacher, Anna Frame, and this student is Yarelle Gonzalez Flores. It looks as if Yarelle and her family did not make, the family didn't make it, so I'm gonna go ahead and have Ms. Frame come up and still say some great things, and I will give her the medal so that she can give that in class tomorrow. Ms. Frame, thank you for the nomination, and I will hand this to you on behalf of the district.
Yarelle has done an amazing job since coming back to school. She missed being at school over the summer and arrives every single day with a very positive attitude. She helps all students feel comfortable and happy in our classroom. Yarelle has really impressed the staff and students at ME Pearson by the way she helps students who are new to our school feel like they are at home. Yarelle does a great job comforting her friends when they are sad and does her best to make them smile. Yarelle is a very special student who wants to see herself and others succeed. She takes pride in her learning and is curious for what is to come the next day. She has so much love for school, and everyone at ME Pearson cannot wait to see where her future takes her.
Ms. Frame, thank you for coming out and celebrating Yarelle. Our next winner is from Argentine Middle School. It's an eighth grade student. They are nominated by Christie Palmer Stuteberg, who's the classroom teacher, and our winner is Jordan Bridges. Oh, wait, is this Yarelle coming? Jordan, if we could have you hold off one second, Jordan. Yarelle
Congratulations, Yarelle and family. Thank you for joining us, and congratulations on this award.
Thank you.
So, without further ado, we'll try this again. Our nominee and winner at the middle school level is Jordan Bridges, and as previously stated, he was nominated by Ms. Palmer Stuteberg.
Hello. Jordan has started this year with amazing positivity, curiosity, and initiative. He is a wonderful example to his peers of how to interact with adults and other students, being kind and interested. He participates in classwork and works hard on the football team. He has a sense of wonder and loves to learn while also joking and having fun as we go. I enjoy getting to spend my days with him because he truly makes our classroom
Jordan, thank you for all those great things, and congratulations on being our middle school winner. Our last winner unfortunately is not able to be with us tonight. We did hear late in the afternoon that they were not able to join us, but we are joined by numerous members of the Harmon staff that are here to celebrate him. So, he is a senior in our sales classroom. His name is Jesse Felix, and he was nominated by a paraprofessional, Ms. Susan Borsella. So, will the Harmon crew please come on up? And I will be giving this medal on behalf of the school district to Ms. Borsella.
All right. Jesse, as you heard, is a sales two student and has been a blessing in our class. He's been with us for four years, and we're truly sad to see him leave us this year. We've watched him grow from a young man to trace in circles, to being so proud, running with his big smile because he's traced his first name. He's a team player, plays on our unified sports team that I help coach. Watching him make his first goal a couple of years ago and the biggest smile and hands in the air running through, that'll forever stay with me. Anybody can be in the worst mood, but as soon as you see Jesse, the room lights up, and there's not a day that goes by that we're not singing and dancing to Red Kingdom as we get ready for the buses.
Board, thank you for the opportunity to honor our students. Look forward to doing this again next month. And just one last plug I'd like to throw in is a thank you to the principals who came out this evening to join the teachers or staff members and the students. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Linkus. Next on our agenda, I'd invite Dr. Elizabeth Midal to come up to present our fellows for this 2021 year. Thank you.
Thanks, President Lopez and Dr. Stubblefield and the Board for having us here today. We're grateful for this opportunity to introduce the fellows from our newest cohort. As you all know, the KCKPS Teaching Fellows are the cornerstone of our alternative certification programs. We recruit these wonderful people, these fellows, who have content area expertise, and then we work with Pittsburgh State to train them in the art and science of teaching. These folks represent a wide variety of expertise. Before they joined us, they were artists, engineers, politicians, and business owners. Now, they work with our middle school and high school students every day, teaching them math, English, science, social studies, and business. In the last two days, these teachers have worked with over 2,500 students. The impact of the fellows is very real and immeasurably positive. I am grateful for the chance to bring them to you so they can introduce themselves, and we are all grateful for your continued support of the fellows program. I'm now gonna invite them to come up, and they're going to just introduce themselves with their name, their building, and the content area that they teach, and I'll invite us all to hold our applause for them, even though it'll be very tempting. Come on up, guys. Come on. It'll be very tempting to clap for them individually. We'll wait until the end and then clap for them as a group to celebrate their current successes and their future successes in the district.
Bonjour. I'm a friends teacher. I work at Wyandotte High School. My name's Mary Arling.
My name is Will Francis. I teach seventh grade ELA at Central Middle School.
Michael Fitzmorris, teaching business at Washington High School.
Hello. My name's Mina Chappell. I teach Spanish at Argentine.
Good afternoon. I'm Daniel Tix. I teach creative writing also at Argentine Middle
Hi, I'm Courtney Iderish. I teach at JC Harmon. I teach American Government and Business Economics.
Hello. My name is Maria Franco. I work at Washington High School, and I teach Algebra
Good afternoon. My name's Sotia Liza Morano. I teach at FL Schlegel, and I am a Spanish teacher.
Hey, how's it going? My name's Carla Gonzalez, and I teach at Harmon High School, and I'm the Algebra I teacher.
Good afternoon. I am Kip Unruh, and I teach chemistry at FL Schlegel.
Hi, my name is Juan Torado, and I teach at Sumner Academy, instructing biology and environmental science.
Hello. My name is Miranda Nichols, and I teach English I and English III at Wyandotte High School.
Hi, I'm Brittany Boer, and I teach science at Fairfax Learning Center.
Good evening. I'm Yolanda Burris. I teach seventh grade science at Eisenhower Middle
Hello, I'm Scott Gruff. I teach physics and physical sciences at FL Schlegel.
Good afternoon. My name is Darian Stafford. I teach business communications at Wyandotte High School.
My name's Caitlin Dove. I work at Carl Bruce Middle School, and I teach eighth grade American history.
Hi, my name's Alicia Pichota, and I teach Spanish at Wyandotte High School.
Hi, I'm Annie Davida, and I teach science at Roseville Middle School.
My name is Jourdain Smallwood. I teach Business Economics at Washington High School.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Taylor Mitchell. I teach sixth grade ELA at Gloria Willis, and I'm a product of Wyandotte County.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michelle Hill. I teach eighth grade ELA at Gloria Willis Middle School.
Hello, my name is Tricia Gates, and I teach sixth grade ELA at Gloria Willis Middle School.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Patrice Brewer, and I teach, I'm a consumer career technical educator at FL Schlegel, and I'm also a proud graduate of Sumner Academy.
Thank you, and welcome to the KCKPS family. We're so glad to have you all, and we're here to support you and to love you, and you're there to love our students. So, thank you for all the work that you're doing in our schools. We're here for you. So, thank you, Next on our agenda, we have one person signed up for community comment, so I will invite Ms. Taylor Stewart to come up to the microphone. As a reminder, Ms. Stewart, if you would just please state your name, and before you leave, or sometime before, if you could just make sure you leave your address and your phone number with Ms. Smith, the board clerk.
You're not gonna make me say it?
If you'd like, where you can leave it with her either way.
I don't need to give you guys my phone number to everybody.
And then you have...
I do live in KCK, and I'm proud of that, so.
No, that's great. And then you have up to three minutes to make your statement. And yes, if you have any documents, you can please leave those with the board.
Hi, I'm Taylor Stewart. I work at Noble Prentice. I'm a fifth grade teacher, and I'm gonna talk about, oh, I didn't start my timer. I'm sorry. May I? And I just wanted to talk about teacher expectations and pay. So, I sent you guys an email on the second, and I just wanted to tell you that I fully intended to work here as long as I lived here, but every year it makes it more and more difficult. This is my fourth year. I want to stay, but things need to change a great deal. Teachers are not staying because of pay not matching the work we do, vacancies in staffing, and working out of contract time to complete the impossible number of nonessential tasks that we are assigned. I am not talking to friends during planned time or daily dialing in any way. It's honestly just too much. We need to feel respected, supported, and trusted, not disposable and micromanaged. Teaching needs to be sustainable, so please consider defining our priorities. I'm really nervous. I'm sorry. Well, I got 50 seconds. Okay. If we leave, you're gonna find replacements, but they will leave too. And just please think about how to retain good teachers and make it a priority so we can, our kids can be taught by invested teachers. After that, I decided to go on Facebook and get a lot of teachers to record their extra hours in their contract, like stuff they do beyond that, and I printed, I gave you guys that on the 13th. In summary, 31 people showed raw data of 1,392 hours worked outside of contract hours since the beginning of this school year. Of those with raw data, there's a range of 4.7 to 26.3 hours worked, with an average of 12.9. My average is 14.2, so this seems realistic. Of those providing estimates, 40 people had an average of 11.2 hours. With the average, I took an average of the two averages and it's 12.1. If we do that, 25 hours of overtime times 12.1 hours over 37 weeks, it comes to $302 extra a week, $11,000 extra a year. So, this is a 25.1% increase. This is not outrageous. It will cost you to keep good teachers and we're worth the cost. We're worth much more than 2% to 3% that we are fighting for. It's ridiculous that we're fighting for 2% to 3%. I did respond to a board member that said that some people are working under hours and I wanted to find data on that because I don't, I do not want us to be all lumped together. It's not my decision to continue to employ underperforming staff members. I know that we're having staffing vacancies, but as far as I know, we do not have tenure. Quality educators are more important than warm bodies in classrooms. There are gray areas because we need them to be supervised, but babysitting is not equal to teaching. Keeping underperforming staff is not a decision left up to teachers, but it does affect us. I know there's limits to my data, but I do want to invite anybody. I put my schedule on the back page. You can come anytime unannounced and see great teaching. Thank you for listening, I'm at three minutes. I had more, but you know, three minutes, so.
Thank you so-
Thank you for listening, respectfully, Taylor Stewart.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart, for the information. Okay, so we will move forward with our agenda. Next up on our agenda is our communications from our superintendent of schools, Dr. Anna Stebbelfield.
Good evening, everyone. I just have a few announcements. Just as just a reminder that we have our COVID-19 vaccination event coming this Saturday, October 2nd at J.C. Harmon from noon until 3:00 PM. In addition to COVID-19 shots, those who attend can even get free COVID-19 testing, free flu shots, free dental exams and fluoride from Swol Help Dental Truck, free sports physicals, free food and giveaways, and apply for job opportunities. This event will feature several other community partners as well. We held our second listening and learning session this past weekend at Harmon High School. I've decided to add two additional sessions, one, with one of them being focused specifically for staff, teachers, and other staff members here in the district. And I'm working with Dominic DeRosa to get a date on the calendar. We will keep you posted when the dates for the additional two sessions are confirmed. The next session will be at Washington High School on Thursday, October 7th from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. I want to thank Jackie Rodriguez and her team for their support with providing translation services to our families during this session. We have an upcoming KCKPS open house from our HR department. We want to invite people to attend our upcoming KCKPS open house for careers on Wednesday, October 6, 2021, at Carl B. Bruce Middle School from 4:30 to 6:30 PM. Principals, directors, supervisors will describe jobs and careers within their buildings. Also, HR will provide discussions and information on KCKPS benefits, applications, salaries. And this will be for all open positions. And HR will also be available to answer any questions. This is, event is open to the entire community and no reservations are required, so please share the information or come to Carl B. Bruce if you're looking for a job. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stebbelfield. Just a few things I'll share this afternoon. Again, congratulations to all of our employees of the month and students of the month. It's always great to be able to start out a board meeting with such positivity and such excitement and to have our fellows here tonight with us. So, again, I just want to lift that up because it's always, it's great to be able to see and hear about the positive things going on in our district as well. So, congratulations to those students and staff and to our fellows. I do want to give a shout out, I told them I would. West Park Elementary, third grade students, they invited me out to the library last week to come and read with them as part of Hispanic Heritage Month. And so, it was a great chance to meet, I think it was over 20 students, sit down with them, read to them, or read with them, answer questions, and let me tell you, they had all kinds of questions for me. So, thank you to Ms. Walker and to Ms. Williams, the librarians there, because they did an awesome job of organizing that. We got to read a book by Supreme Court Justice Sonia Sotomayor. So, congratulations to that school, it was an amazing time. Shout out to those students who let me be a panther for a day. So, thank you for that opportunity and hopefully I'll get a chance to come back out there with you. I did want to say thank you to the KCK Foundation for Excellence for a, an event that they held last week to recognize Dr. Stebbelfield and our amazing staff that we have. So, thank you to Crystal Watson, to your board, and to your staff for the work that you put into that event. Thank you to those that were present that could join us. It was great to see, see folks and to celebrate again our administration and the leadership and to hear a little bit more of that vision. And again, to recognize the power of collaboration between the two entities that we have in our community. As Dr. Stebbelfield mentioned, the Don't Throw Away Your Shot vaccine event this Saturday, so please make sure that you let folks know about that event and that you invite people out there to get their vaccines, physicals, flu shot, whatever it is that they might need that we can provide. Also on Saturday, I'll just give a quick plug to Silver City Days in Argentina at Emerson Park that's happening this Saturday as well. I mention that because you will have an opportunity to dunk the president of the school board. So, I volunteered to be on a dunk tank to help raise money for a scholarship, a local scholarship, and so I see some eyes around here, Janie, I'm looking at you, who would love the chance to dunk the school board president. So, I will be sitting in a dunk tank. Come on out, dunk me, it's supposed to be kind of cool, so that'll be fun. So, just wanted to shout them out as well. And then lastly, I'll just end on this, and I know he still has a few days with us, but I did just want to recognize Mr. Dennis Covington, who's finishing up his tenure here with KCKPS. Mr. Covington, you've been with us a short time, but we really appreciate and value your leadership, your dedication to the school district and everything that you've done to help us improve the quality and access of high-quality education. And so, we just wanted to thank you for your time here and wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors and you will always be a part of KCKPS family. And so, again, thank you for all that you've done. You're not free yet, I know you're on the agenda tonight, so we've got to give you some parting words as well, but I just wanted to say thank you for your time here. So, let's give Mr. Covington. With that, I, that's all I had. Ms. Drew, thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to let the board members know that on tomorrow I will be attending at a KASB advocacy meeting that's at the board office in Leavenworth, Kansas, and I sent you information from the last meeting I went to and I will be passing on that information. And on a sad note, I just want to acknowledge within our community, we had a young man named Tyrance Dangerfield who passed away. He was a bus driver for 22 years here within our school district, and so we just ask you to keep the family in prayer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drew. Condolences to the family and to anyone. We continue to lose family members in our community and so it's always difficult. So, prayers and comfort to that family, to all families. Dr. Nguyen, thank you.
And thank you, Mr. President. Just a reminder that the KSB conference, registration closes October 22nd. And so, it looks exciting and it's in Overland Park and they've asked for a choir from the district to perform, so that's in the hands of Dr. Stebbelfield, so we will have a presence. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. Reminder, board members, if you would like to participate in that, please let Ms. Smith know and we can get you registered for that conference. Thank you. Ms. Page.
Mr. Lopez, I wanted to give a shout out to, I think the program is the McKinney-Vento Program, who did the musical for our homeless students. They did a remarkable job and hopefully, if people still want to give, I don't think they're turning down any donation, but whatever we could give, I think they would appreciate it. And I would also like to note that we lost Willie Schaefer Sr., who was a delivery driver for the district, and they had his services over the weekend. He had worked for the district for 25 years. And I also had a chance to go visit Harmon High School and we got a lot of work to do in our high schools. And we need all the support that we can get from community people so we can help our young people make the transition back into the school system and understand why they're in school. So, it's going to take all of us, it's not just the district or the board, it's our entire community. And we want to step up and help our kids.
Thank you, Ms. Page. I love that call for community to come together and work together to love on our kids and give them the best that we can. We need to continue to push that and hear that and open our doors for partnering in the community. So, thank you for sharing that. And yeah, absolutely, congratulations to Ms. Jessica Smith and the entire McKinney-Vento Program. I think they broke a record in the amount that they raised this year, so kudos to you all. Thank you. Any other board members? Ms. Humphries.
What time is the dunk tank?
I'll let you do your homework to find that information.
No, I wanted to say that I've been out to volleyball games and basketball, not basketball, football. You know me and sports. And we have had a wonderful turnout of parents and community to our middle school football games. I don't know if you noticed Saturday at my Harmon, they were parked down the hill. And it's wonderful to see everyone out celebrating our kids for positive things. So, I just want to tell the community again, thank you for that, because it means so much to our kids to have that support. And the staff that show up, the family, the parents and students get so excited when they see staff members, because it shows that they're not just there eight to five or seven to 3:30. They're there for our kids all the time. That's just a positive note I wanted to say. And I'll be there for the dunk tank.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Ms. Humphries, for sharing. Anyone else? Ms. Clark?
I think the only thing I would add, and Dr. Stebbelfield spoke on it, is the listening tours that are taking place. And so, going back to some of the comments that Ms. Page made, the opportunity is there for our community to come out and to be able to be heard, so please look on our website and get those dates, because we want to hear from you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Okay, so we will continue with our agenda. Next up, would entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Question, discussion?
Yes.
Page.
Is it now the time? I'd like to ask that we remove item I? Or will we discuss that at another time?
If, would you like to pull item I from the consent agenda? Is that what you're requesting?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I don't know who made the motion, if you would amend your motion to approve the consent agenda minus my item I?
I approve it, yes.
Person that seconded?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, discussion? Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Dr. Yeager, yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes, thank you. Can we go ahead and take item I up now, Ms. Page? If you had a question or a comment on that?
I want to be careful, because I want to respect the rights of individuals. I didn't see a certain name on there and I had questioned it, that the name be removed. I didn't see it and I wasn't sure.
So, in that particular set, we'll talk about that later, but it was not on the item I, it was on a previous board agenda. So, I, item I is adding benefits for our long-term subs in order to retain and keep them this year. Not sure why the attachment, because it was shared last, in the previous board meeting under new business, there were no names attached to item I, it was just a proven health benefits for our long-term subs.
Well, I think that's a good thing. They need that in order to get them. But I had a concern about one individual and we want to make sure, we are an education, an institution of higher learning, and we want to make sure we do things decent and in order, and we don't want just anybody working with our kids.
And that, that individual is not a long-term sub, it's a building sub, but we'll discuss it in executive session, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Now entertain a motion to approve building long-term subs, item I, that was under consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any further discussion? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Dr. Yeager, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next up, we have our new business. As a reminder, board, these are reports that hopefully you've had a chance to review and look at. Now would be an opportunity if there are questions about the reports that have been presented. First up is the communication and website contract. Mr. Birch is here to answer any questions that you may have. Dr. Stebbelfield, was there anything else on that?
Well, Mr. Birch is here if you have questions and there is information only and we will bring it back for approval at the next board meeting, depending on the questions.
Thank you. And any questions from board members?
And I should have asked this earlier, I apologize. I'm not asking, asking for an answer right now, but could he give us a pro and con, why this is better than what we had? And what are the benefits? And what are the drawbacks for either one?
I see Mr. Birch approaching, he may have something he wants to share. Mr. Birch.
Thank you, yes, those are good questions. So, basically, me and our webmaster and staff, we vetted three different companies. Our current site, while Mike did a great job on it, is not responsive to mobile devices. A lot of our parents use mobile devices, so when the site is on like your phone, it doesn't adjust appropriately. You have different letters and words that are on top of each other. And also, I got to be careful how I say this, but there's some other issues that I can share with you later, that we really need to take care of. Yes.
Okay, because I was just, we're spending a lot of money and we want to make sure that we spend it properly. And just to make sure, because I know there's, things are changing constantly. And if we get this, then how long does this last? Because you know, we come out with something and it's only good for a year or two, and then the next two years, we're getting something else, so.
And those are very good questions. And what I would say is that websites are always changing. You always want to enhance them. Organizations are always going through and reviewing their webpages, because you have to make adjustments over the years. And when you think about it, we have 40 something sites, school sites. The content management system, it's okay, but this one is more user-friendly. So, there's a lot of things that improving the site will enhance, further enhance our communication efforts. A lot of our staff use our site. So, we want to make it more easy for people to access information and the other information that I provided for you.
Will we train? That's my problem with the other, well, that's not a website, but when we look at Infinite Campus and Canvas, so many still say they don't know how to use the systems. So, will we train people to use it or offer something?
As far as the website, so each school will have a content manager.
Okay.
And what they do is that they keep their sites upgraded. My staff will train those content managers at those school sites on this new version. And also, the vendor will help us provide training. And the vendor will also provide, when there are some technical issues, they will also be available and on-call to assist us.
Thank you, Mr. Birch. Further questions for Mr. Birch? You always, board, again, this is information tonight, information only. If there are additional questions, please email those to Dr. Stebbelfield and Mr. Birch and we can get those answered for you, unless there are any more tonight. Thank you, Mr. Birch.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is an informational item around the board library digitization initiative proposal. Wow, that's a mouthful. So, reminder, board, this is a project that our board clerk has been working on alongside Mr. Covington and other staff members. This is in regards to our board library and potentially digitizing the documents that we have, the historical documents that we have, and storing them properly. The way they're being stored currently is not the best way to preserve these documents. And so, Ms. Smith and Mr. Covington have gone out for bids and are presenting a potential solution for the board to consider. So, you have the information. If there are any questions, potentially, please, now would be an appropriate time. Mr. Covington is here to answer questions. Ms. Humphries.
Is this the only company we've spoken with?
And Mr. Covington is approaching. I can tell you, that is an excellent question, thank you. They are the one group that- Thank you. They are the one group that really focuses and does this work, but Mr. Covington can give you more information about other companies. Thank you.
We researched for other companies, but they did not want to come out and give us a bid, because they would have to come out and evaluate all the stuff that we have in the store room. So Iron Mountain was the only one available to come out to take a look. And fortunately, Iron Mountain is also the state contractor for that kind of work. So the state has bid this kind of work out before, and has determined that Iron Mountain was a contractor to use.
Okay. Are they going to store our information on the cloud, or are they just digitizing it for us, and then we?
They would digitize it. And then if we want to buy a service to where we can go out and retrieve it, there's another nominal cost to, for that piece. But yes, they will digitize it and store it, and then we can have a supplemental contract to where we can go out and retrieve it.
And the way I understand it, Mr. Covington, unless I misheard, is they also have a service where they store the information on the cloud. It's cloud-based software, so if we want to retrieve something, they'll digitize and itemize, catalog everything for us. Ms. Smith will have to help them do that. But then we can go online and just type in on their search bar, for lack of a better term, and then find the documentation that we need from the cloud and download it. But as Mr. Covington said, if we need a hard copy, there's also a process to do that.
Will we be retaining the hard copies in storage anywhere, or are we going to dispose of them?
So all of them will be disposed, and some of them we will maintain. Like, there were some pictures and some other documents that we, we should keep the hard copies of.
And Ms. Smith has some information about how long historic records must be maintained, and so we'll make sure we follow that. We always can talk to Mr. Goheen. But the documents will be stored off-site, so it's an off-site facility where they will be stored at the right temperature and things of that nature to preserve the documents.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Humphries. Other questions? Dr. Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Help me understand. I don't know if I understood what you said, that the, the one cost is for the processing, and then there's an additional cost per document? Is there, help me understand. I don't think I understood.
No, to digitize the documents, there's a cost per. But to go out and retrieve documents, there's another contract that you have with Iron Mountain to help you go out and retrieve the documents.
And that, that cost is here as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Again, information purposes tonight. Board, if you have additional questions, please email this, those to us, and we'll get you additional information. Thank you, Mr. Covington. Thank you, Ms. Smith, for the work you've put into it as well. I know it's been a labor of love, so thank you for what you've done. Next on our agenda is information about WarriorsForWine dot M O U. We have Ms. Garcia Stewart here with us to answer any questions. If there are any questions, it is an informational item tonight as well. Seeing none. Thank you, board. Again, if you have questions?
Randy?
Yes, Dr. Jaeger.
Randy, I do have a question. Under it is listed as approved the memorandum of understanding. Is it, is that not listed correctly?
I'm sorry, I missed that first part of your question.
It says on our board docs, approve the memorandum of understanding. Are they requesting approval?
It should just be for informational purposes tonight. There should not have to be action taken tonight. This will come back in front of the board at a later date for approval of the M O U. Tonight's just, first time we're seeing it for information only. So we'll make sure that we get that.
My concern is, we've been asking the community to come in, participate, be active, and I think that it's really important for us to move quickly to get a program like this into our schools, because as the teacher spoke earlier, it's not getting necessarily easier as the students are there every day, and we know that there's a number of safety things going on. So I would really like to get this put into motion. So I would like to make a motion that we go ahead and approve the memorandum of understanding for the Wine Dot for Warriors to come into our schools.
Thank you, Dr. Jaeger. So there is a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Again, and I'll just share again, this did come up earlier, a question about the process. Typically, the processes will present an item for a first go-around for information only, and then it would come back to the board. I understand, and here are the urgency that you speak of, Dr. Jaeger, so thank you for that. But there's a motion. Ms. Clark?
I'll go ahead and second it for conversation.
There's a motion and a second. I'll open the floor for discussion or questions.
That's a good question.
Dr. Nguyen?
This question for Mr. Goheen. Is there a, do we normally have requirements for organizations to be bonded, or is there a liability issue?
Yeah, so not, not necessarily bonded. We do have in, in board policy and in connection with our, I think it's like a, a facility use type of arrangement. I'm not sure this qualifies as a facility use, because we're allowing these individuals or this group to come in to provide services in the district. But historically, there, if we have people coming in, we require them to have insurance and things of that nature, if that's what you're asking. Not, not bonded in a sense, but have insurance that would cover a liability for anything that they do.
So then, I guess my question to you is, are, do they have insurance and they?
Well, they're not asking for the use of facilities. These are our volunteers that are coming in to work with our schools and with our students, as our other partners do with Caring for Kids and other partnerships. So they're not requiring any use of our facility. They come in and work with our students and our families, and they do provide after-school events, but it's at their facility.
It's at their facility?
Uh-huh.
Where is their facility?
It's located, the exact address, I don't have in front of me, no Roberts here, the, can you give me the exact address? Yeah, 401 North 78 Street. That's their own facility, Wine Up for Warriors.
I just want to clarify, when they are in our facilities, they're with our staff and our kids.
Absolutely. They're always with our staff, with the classroom teacher, with the principal, and work with our students when they provide one-on-one or mentoring. Many of the events that they host are at their site or after school. But they do, they are supporting our building staff with helping with lunchroom duty or dismissal. They're in the hallways, but they're always with our staff.
And then when they are on-site, their parents are, that's something that parents are doing directly, not necessarily associated.
Yes, we don't provide this.
Families are accessing it on their own when they're at their site.
Yes.
So there are two things. We're asking for the M O U for when they're on our site, with our staff, but they also provide other services in general to the community, which is, although they're our kids, families are.
Absolutely.
Taking them there. Yeah.
So their organization has grown. So Robert and I were just talking about this. When he signed up to be a volunteer, he was a volunteer of one. And so the Ju, the Correctional Advisory Board, J-CAB, Juvenile Correction Advisory Board, and different funding from the unified government, has supported and Wine Up for Warriors, and we're just so thrilled, has grown. And so they did many things during the pandemic, which was only their second year, by providing access to food, delivering them to our families and the home things that they could do. And so now here we are in our third year and want to continue that supportive relationship. But this will just be an M O U to provide them access and continue to support our schools more on a volunteer basis, since the organization has grown so much.
So let me make it very clear. I'm supportive of it.
Uh-huh.
So don't get that impression. So, you know, we don't want that out on the airwaves. But the point I was asking, so this M O U does not, what, what do we have in place to govern taking students off-site? Do we have any, anything that references that? I mean, this is the first time you, it's not in this that says this is only on school, but that you do take kids off-site.
So the only off-site happens is after-school hours. If parents want them to engage in the after-school program, that's after-school hours. So we don't transport, and Roberts is not picking them up, or Wine Up for Warriors. This is something that they engage in on after-school hours or weekends. The M O U is just to allow Wine Up for Warriors, not that the nonprofit is grown into our schools.
So we have no jurisdiction over that?
Right.
And we're not even addressing that?
Right.
So I'll go back to my question. Mr. Goheen did not mention facility usage, so that's not a category. Do they have insurance, or do we require people when they come into our schools, other than, I think you referenced there's background checks and things like that? But as an organization, is there any requirement?
I think, I think they would, now understanding a little bit better, I think they would just be covered by our volunteer policy. And so as such, although it's organizationally driven, each individual associated with the organization would be coming to the school building as a school volunteer, subject to whatever background requirements we have as school volunteers. And so they'd be covered by our insurance as volunteers. So that's, that's how it would happen.
Well, thank you. Just, it wasn't spelled out here, and I probably think it should for, but I, you looked over the M O U, Mr. Goheen?
No. I, I did not.
So I guess my question is, do we, when we have MOUs, do we believe they should be vetted by legal, or we don't?
I think, I think it normally depends on what the M O U is and what the contract is. Most contracts I look at, MOUs, I mean, it's, it's up for a first read, so I haven't seen it. I'm seeing it the first time, just like you are, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. Ms. Page?
I think we should wait and allow Mr. Goheen a chance to look at this. Again, I'm not against it, but let's do it decent and in order. And if he hasn't looked at it, it just makes sense that we need to make sure we dot our i's and cross our t's.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Any other further questions or discussion? Ms. Humphries?
I, I would prefer and wait and have Greg look it over and do, like we do, present it at the one meeting, and the next meeting, we can vote on it. But that's my preference.
Okay. Thank you. Other thoughts or questions?
I have a question.
Ms. Clark?
Our volunteers that come into our schools, what's the, I'm all about volunteers, but I'm not about, like, throwing bodies and not being strategic with how we're using, leveraging people. So what's the process there when we bring in volunteers or determining what school they go to or where they should be involved? And you, we can speak specifically, specifically to this if we want, however. Sure. Thank you. Yes, great question. So it's twofold. Our volunteers complete an application that's on our district website that does include a complete background check, and then they complete an orientation, which this organization has done from the onset and as their staff have expanded in their nonprofit. Wine Up for Warriors is also part of our Caring for Kids partnership. And so they are supporting kids, supporting schools through our Caring for Kids and through other access and availability. When schools want to invite volunteers in, they let the Department of Student Services know. We meet with the organization and/or volunteer, which we did with Wine Up for Warriors. And when it was just Robert, when it was Juan, they complete the background check and complete the orientation.
Okay, so what I think I hear is the school makes the call on whether or not they want volunteers to be involved based upon what they see their need being.
Schools can, or when organizations or individual volunteers maybe have an interest in a school or some schools, they often seek out the Department of Student Services initially as well. But it could happen one or two ways.
Do we do any, I'm not saying we should, I'm just asking, do we do any tracking of those students, like the success rate of having volunteers into the schools, or what that? Do they follow any of the students? Do we, do we watch any of that?
So it really varies on, on how the volunteers are servicing the school. Oftentimes, in some of the ways that I just listed for Wine Up for Warriors, they were providing food access, and so that was a broad range. They were supporting schools with cafeteria duty, before and after dismissal, to work with the students. And now they are expanding those services, which is what is included in the M O U, again, at no cost, to provide that one-on-one mentoring. And that is and can be tracked with the students that they were working with, one-on-one. And we do that with other organizations, such as Young Women on the Move. But this will be the first year, as they enter into their third year, beginning to do that one-on-one academic mentoring. And not that they weren't doing it before, but they've been very strategic in how they're approaching what their, as their organization grows.
Okay, thank you. I'm not really sure, like, what others, what some will support. I would be able to support the program after Greg's looked at it. So I don't know if we really want to table it for two weeks, or if we go ahead and approve it, based upon Greg looking over things.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. I know Dr. Jaeger had a comment, and then I can follow up with that.
I wanted to clarify. Lisa, could you provide background information on how you came up on this M O U, so that people won't think it was just put together and presented to us? Also, if, in here, it says that it helps support academics reading groups, participating lessons, after-school program, assist where needed in the classroom with teachers. Again, I am not an advocate for putting it off when our, when our buildings are clearly asking for assistance, when our community is saying, can we be a part, and saying, no, you can't at all. So I think it's really important for us to take action tonight. Also, I'm okay with what Randy, Yolanda just asked a question relating to how Greg could look it over, or if it could be tabled to the end of the meeting possibly. For feedback, it's not that long. It's two pages of a memorandum of understanding.
So Ms. Garcia Stewart, I'll let you comment if you had any comments on Dr. Jaeger. Ms. Clark, to your point, and Dr. Jaeger, the board could, if it was the will of board, we could approve, subject to Mr. Goheen's review and approval as well, if that was the will of the board. So to answer your question, Ms. Clark, we would have to do a friendly amendment to the motion that was presented. Ms. Garcia Stewart, I don't know if you had anything in response to Dr. Jaeger?
I don't. I didn't hear any questions, but just in support of that, I mean, our schools are eager to get the support, and they're doing a tremendous service to our students and our community and our families.
I think part of the question was if this is a kind of a template M O U that, that's been used previously, thing that, that we have in our system or that we use with other organizations as well.
I don't think I heard that question. So we don't have a template for our nonprofit or organizations. They submit it based on their organization and the, the staff that they have, or the many different organizations that provide service and support to our students, and then we submit it, obviously, to the board.
Thank you.
Because their, their services vary, right? So.
Thank you. So there's a motion. There, I don't know if that was a request to amend your motion.
Yes, I'm, I'm fine with doing a friendly amendment.
So for clarity, the amendment would be, or the motion, amended motion would be to approve the M O U with WarriorsForWine dot pending review and approval from Mr. Goheen or council. Ms. Clark, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion?
Well, I just want to say, because it was said in Ms. Jaeger's comment, that's not why we asked that. We're not trying to say, they set something up, and they're trying to do something illegal, because we're going against the original protocol that you present, and then we vote the next time. And I'm not against it, but I'm for, it can be tabled, and we bring it back up at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Smith, roll call vote, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes, but I would request that before we have someone bring an M O U to us again, that it go through legal first, then we wouldn't have these questions.
Can you repeat that? I, I didn't hear what she said.
Sure.
That, I said yes, but I request that in the future, that we make sure the MOUs have gone before legal before they come before us.
Thank you.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
I'm voting no, because I'd like to see us follow protocol. I don't have a problem with the program, but I just don't like the way we did it.
Thank you. Dr. Nguyen?
I too, support everything I think I mentioned at a board meeting, to engage the community. But if we don't have, I'll just say, I, I vote no, because we need to have legal, look at these agreements. And, you know, we, we do things just real messy here lately, and it's, it's not becoming to us. So I, I would like to support Mrs. Humphries' idea. I don't know if it has to be in a motion for it to, to be, because I don't, obviously, it's not policy. So I will vote no, although I do support any engagement, but we're not doing things properly. Thank you.
Dr. Jaeger?
No. No.
Nguyen, no. Dr. Jaeger?
Dr. Jaeger, yes, I do support it. We are doing things in decency and in order. We put a call out to our community, and our community answered the call. I believe it's important for us to act swiftly without demeaning others in the process.
Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will continue with our agenda. Next up is our bond update for Mr. Dennis Covington and team.
This is just a reminder, this is only an informational item. It will not be coming back, but it's just to provide information on the wrap-up of the first part of the bond and a few little additional information.
Good evening. We have with us our bond construction crew from J.E. Dunn. If y'all will come forward, they're going to do the presentation, and I'll turn it over to Doug, so he looked over the work and monitored all of the work that was done. I would like to personally thank J.E. Dunn for a job well done with our bond, and I'll let them toot their own horns for a minute, and I'll come back at the end to talk about some possible decisions you all might need, that you will need to make at a later date.
Good evening, everybody. Dr. Stupfelfield, President Lopez, you know, and board, you know me, Doug Clements, Director of Physical Properties. There you go. So we're going to go through this bond recap. This is our agenda for tonight, just a quick overview. Lee and his team will go over most of the projects, and we'll discuss the community and student engagement. Then we get to the bond budget update, and then, as Dennis said, he'll come back and talk about some future thoughts for the district. So we wanted to go back very quickly and talk a little bit about kind of where we started, if you remember, back in 2015. Seems like a long time ago, but then it's just yesterday. So at the time, our average age of our facilities was 62 years old, and I'll say sometimes, you know, that doesn't really mean a whole lot to people, other than I'll tell you that a lot of times, people will say that an average age of a commercial building or the lifespan is about 60 years old, right? So we were past that. We engaged with an architectural firm, DLR, I think that was in 2015, and they did a full facilities assessment. They identified $500 million in deferred maintenance needs in the district. So then, projects were discussed, and we took a $235 million bond program to the vote, which was overwhelmingly approved by the community, 79% approval. That bond included 80-plus total projects, impacted all buildings, went through 40 months of construction. I assume that's an updated as of right now? Yeah, okay, because we're actually still working. To get to that $235 million, I will share, just as we go through these slides, a couple of abbreviations that you'll see, a couple of terms. That $235 million was divided between work that J.E. Dunn managed, and those are, they were considered our CMAR, Construction Manager at Risk. You'll see an abbreviation, DDM, that's District Deferred Maintenance. Those were projects that we, as a district, managed ourselves. And so this is basically the leadership team as it is now. Of course, you know Mr. Covington, and sorry to see you go, Dennis, I'll say that while I have the opportunity. You know me. I also have with me tonight, I don't know if you have met, had the opportunity to meet Kurt Wagner. He's the Assistant Director of Physical Properties, has been helping us quite a bit here the last couple of years since he's been with the district. Here tonight with J.E. Dunn, of course, we have Lee Moore, John Slick, Keisha, and Lauren. And so I'm going to turn this over now to Lee, and he can talk a little bit more about his overall team and the work that they did.
Good evening. Thank you for having us come in tonight. So lots of dollars that you saw there. We're going to talk about all the projects tonight. I just want to start off and say thank you for letting us be a partner with you on this journey. As Doug mentioned, it's still going, but it's been pretty, it's been an exciting ride. And it was a lot of work, and you see 55 faces on the screen and tally up the leadership team. We had over 60 J.E. Dunn folks putting this work and putting your vision in place. So that meant a lot to our company and to our employees, and again, we thank you for that. So we're going to dive into, and I know we're going to try to be short on time here, but we're going to hit on all of our projects real quick. And Mr. Slick, who was our pre-construction director, he's going to help me kind of run through the project updates, and we're going to start off by kind of talking about our new builds. So we had a total of six brand-new buildings that were part of the bond issue, two new middle schools, three new elementary schools, and then a facilities building. And so Wellborne Elementary was one of the first two new builds right out of the gate, and this was around 72,000 square foot, as you know, on the existing Wellborne site. Unique part of this project was it was one of the tightest sites, and if you can just imagine that little square of grass that you guys had at a playfield there, that's what we built the building on while the rest of the campus stayed active, you know, for a whole school year. So pretty exciting, and once we got the building complete, we actually demoed those two existing buildings and provided what you see there now. So beautiful building. Glory Willis was the first middle school that we started. That is at the old side of the Coronado Middle School. That building's around 127,000 square feet. Again, a unique site, and really, all of these projects, it seemed like the architects that built them originally actually put them in the best spot on site. So it took some challenge and some work to figure out how to put these new buildings on the site while keeping the existing ones active. So you'll see here the pretty pictures. We've got a flex theater with some retractable seating, and the gym at that facility is a storm shelter, and actually, all the projects, all the new builds came with storm shelters. So another new elementary was Lowell Bruni Elementary, again, another 72,000 square foot building. This project replaced White Church and Bethel Elementary Schools. We opened this up in the fall of 2020, and you can see there in one of the pictures, a really neat outdoor learning space there. Another one of our new elementaries was West Park Elementary School, and this project replaced William Allen White and Parker Elementary.
Yeah, and something unique about this one was West Middle School, which was the original building on that site, was, the original intent was to renovate that into the elementary school, but as we got into the project, there was a lot of complications. It was an old building, and through a lot of cost analysis, there wasn't that much of a difference between renovating it and building a new, so the administration made the choice to tear it down and turned out to be a great new elementary school for the district.
And the unique about this project, it had the tightest schedule, so if you can imagine, in June of 19, they move out, and we have to demo that building, then build a new building, and turn it back over in August of 2020. And so a real tight schedule, but an exciting building. And then the last new build school that we did was completed in August of 2020, and that was Carl B. Bruce Middle School. That one was a little bit bigger, that's 134,000 square foot, and that replaced Northwest Middle School and is on that existing site.
Yeah, and another unique, like Lee had said, Northwest was built on the best location on that site as well, and so as we got into the design of that project, we looked at four or five options, trying to squeeze the new middle school on that site, but none of them worked with the entrance from 18th Street. And so Doug and his team had had this suggestion of looking at the site that housed the kitchen and the warehouse, and so it worked out much, much better. And so the idea was to move those and relocate those two facilities that were onsite, as they were very aged facilities as well.
Which ties right into the sixth new build project, which was a new district maintenance facility, and this is built on the north side of the West Park property.
Yeah, and so this wasn't a project that was a part of the original bond, but, and we'll kind of explain this, as we went through this process, we were always looking for opportunities to save more dollars and add additional scope to the bond, and this was one of those examples where we were able to find some other savings to pay for this new facility to replace the one that we put Carl B. Bruce on.
So next up, we did a handful of science classroom renovations at each of your high schools, and upgrading those facilities and teaching spaces for the students. We also had a handful of kitchen projects, and we actually did, I think it was six elementary school kitchens, and one at Rosedale Middle School. A couple of these were additions, which we'll get to in a minute, but obviously, very important for the food distribution within the district and getting some of those kitchens upgraded. Next up was the Career Academy and Exploration Spaces, so focusing on the middle schools and high schools. First at the middle schools, so each of the middle schools, we created some career exploration spaces within those existing buildings, spaces like maker spaces that you'll see there, some breakout rooms, and really start introducing those students to project-based learning. We get to the high schools, and so those four high schools there, we did Career Academies. So Sumner Academy kind of had already had those kind of academy spaces, but these other four high schools, so again, created some, and these are pictures of Wind Up, so a couple academy spaces there was like nursing and culinary arts, and so really providing some more opportunities for your students. Next up was additions, and we were able to actually add some of this work, and John will mention that in a minute, but we had four elementary school additions and a middle school addition at Rosedale.
So the four elementary school additions were, again, four projects that weren't intended to be part of the original bond work, but those schools all had needs for additional classrooms. They were overcrowded, and so in the process, we were able to do that through bond savings, but also incorporate storm shelters into all four of those additions as well, so to give the kids a safe place.
One of the most important aspects of the bond issue was secure entries, and you'll see a pretty long list here. There's actually 33 schools that, because of this bond issue, now have secure entrances for the safety of your students and staff. Now Doug's favorite part, which is the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing upgrades, we like to say that as MEP. This is the boring stuff for most of us, but we actually did a significant amount of work in this regards, six new buildings, significant upgrades, including the total replumb of Washington, Wind Up, and Sumner. And you'll see there kind of a Google map of Wind Up, just showing kind of how much work we had to do outside of that building as well as inside. And a fun fact for you, we did 8.1 miles of new piping in that building, right? So sanitary, water, storm, all of that. So again, stuff that you don't see, but you know what? The plumbing works really good over there now. So, and that was a really tough project because of the age of the building and the historic nature of it. So a timeline, so we went through really quick on all the projects, but we thought it would be neat to kind of show kind of what this timeline looked when we started this adventure in November of 2016 to where we're at today in 2021. And the one thing I really want to point out are the summers of 2018, 19, and 20, and if you see that, we were at anywhere from 12 to 15 locations in one summer, and didn't bring the dollar values of what we were spending a month, but we were putting in some pretty good amount of work in those summers. And so again, it took that team of 60-plus with J.E. Dunn, not to mention Doug and Kurt's help, to get us through this bond issue.
One other thing I kind of want to talk through a little bit is, you'll see at the beginning of 2017, there was this thing called Budget Validation Process, and this was something that Doug and the administration brought forward as an idea, and it really was trying to validate the entire bond early on and understand all the work that was wanting to get done, to want to make sure that we had enough funds to do it all. But through that process, as we pointed out, there was opportunities to add additional scope, and just want to compliment the administration because it was such a fantastic process, and we've actually taken that same blueprint and implementing it at other school districts we're working with, because it was such a success with this one, and we, Lee and I talk all the time, we always look back on this process that was implemented for this particular bond, and it's, and the great achievement that it was.
So I'm going to turn it over to Doug, and he's going to talk about the deferred maintenance projects.
Before we do that, I do feel like I was remiss in not mentioning as I was introducing people. There's a lot of people that were involved in this whole big project, and I feel like I should mention the architectural teams of Hollison Miller and HTK and their various consulting engineers, and there were a lot of people here in the district, including shop staff and the shop foreman, that periodically, I'd ask them to go, go take a walk there and see if you see anything. So I wanted to mention them as well. And I will also mention that, to Lee's point, I do know that in August of both 2018 and 2019, we're kind of at high points as far as the amount of work. Each of those two months, we are, our bond draw to the bank was right about $12.6 million for that single month, August of 18 and August of 19. So it was very significant. So again, the DDM, the District Deferred Maintenance, some of these are the projects that we did, playground improvements, building envelope, which really just means the tuck pointing and taking care of the bricks on the outside, trying to keep them from getting too much water infiltration. We did do seven fire alarm replacements, some roof improvements and replacements, did a little bit of HVAC improvements, which we're planning on doing some more here this fall, and then kind of a late addition that you all were involved with was our LED conversion project here recently. And with that, I'll turn it over to Keisha.
So next up is the really fun stuff, which is the community and student engagement, so I want to turn it over to Keisha Bosby. She handles our diversity inclusion, and then Lauren Kepler is going to talk about her efforts with the community and student engagement.
Thanks, Lee. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
With regards to outreach and participation, something that we did with this bond project as a team and as a group, our approach was 100% inclusion, 100% inclusion with regards to bidding to minority women contractors, 100% inclusion with regards to workforce opportunities on the different projects that we worked on throughout this bond project. So the graphic you see there just really represents what the results were with regards to our contracting with those minority women trade partners. We hosted over 60 outreach events. We were able to contract over $77 million back with our local KCK small businesses. We were just really determined to impact the narrative that many probably had put over this project early on, to really make a difference and to really have an impact, and to leverage our relationships, to be honest, with those minority women contractors that we often work with, so that we were able to bring them over to this project so that they could perform on this project as well. Some awesome photos here from Construction Workforce Industry Day. This event was actually held in 2018 over at Washington High School and has become an annual event for J.E. Dunn, and what it really is, an opportunity for, I'm sorry, put this down, I can't talk, was an opportunity for us to connect with the community with regards to skill trade opportunities. And we were honored to be able to do, to host the event, actually, in the gym prior to all the construction that summer, and we had about 200 people come out from the community. We partnered with the local radio station, and again, this has become an annual event for us, and again, to really help give that visibility to the construction trade opportunities and make sure that individuals know how to be a part of those opportunities. I made some notes here just to make sure I didn't miss, but minorities and women are still underrepresented in the skilled trades, and so this continues to be a big push for ours, and Lauren's going to talk a little bit more on how we intentionally reach out to high school students early to make sure that they have the information as well as faculty. Something that we heard loud and clear from you guys early on when we started working with you is that you had a lot of information from the militaries and a lot of information from colleges, but you didn't really receive any information on skilled trades, and so it was hard for you to communicate those opportunities to the students. Transparency is key for community projects like this, and we use a bunch of different methods to be able to communicate with the community on what was happening throughout the project. We developed the Economic Inclusion Committee, which you see a few pictures from some events that were hosted for that, and a few of you may even participate in some of those forums, but it was pulled together in partnership with Crystal Watson, and what we did were pull together local community stakeholders, whether it was from different chambers or contracting organizations or workforce labor unions, so that we were all in the room monthly to talk about the progress of the project, get feedback from them on things that we could do better. They helped us to solve issues that we were having on the project, so it was just really a good partnership throughout that project to be able to have that group to rely on. And then the other graphic you see there on the screen is actually the bond project website that was developed just specifically for this project, and it was used really in mind for the faculty, for the families, and for everyone else that was involved in the project, so that they could understand at any time what was happening, whether it was a contractor looking to see when we were bidding a scope of work, or whether a parent just wanted to know if a street was going to be closed a certain day when they were dropping off kids at school. So we really used that website to, again, be very transparent and be able to share the progress of the project along the way.
Okay, another way we reached out to the community was we actually contracted with Carrie Stapleton of Phillips West to produce a quarterly newsletter, to really share that excitement and what was going on, and just to capture those memories that were happening throughout the bond progress. So on here, we featured things like student engagement activities, we featured the Board of Education after the election, and then a small business owner that was working on the projects as well. So it was a great way to get that out to the community, and we also could share that easily on social media. Another way we reached out with the community was celebrating those milestones. Another way we reached out with the community was celebrating those milestones. So you all might remember in 2017, we loaded up the board on a bus at the administrators' and I think we had a handful of groundbreakings in one single day. So that was a really fun day, celebrating, really getting the shovels in the ground so the community could see their funds and their support at work. You can see here, we had a great celebration at Welborn, along with many of the other buildings recently, Gloria Willis, a lot of special, community-focused celebrations that we're really proud and honored to be a part of. On the right there, you see a tour for the new teachers at West Park Elementary School. So it had been a rough year with COVID, but they got to see their new school and bring back some excitement during that difficult time. Bottom right, we had to say, we have been a supporter and had some fun at the Kansas City School Foundation for Excellence golf tournament, so we're proud to be a corporate partner for that for many years. And we know that that directly supports your students. So, and then, of course, building buildings is our specialty, but also we exist to enrich the lives of the communities, of the students in the communities that we work in. So we made a great effort to really engage with the students of Kansas City Kansas Public Schools. I just want to highlight a couple of those engagements. So the top left two pictures, we were working in Wyandotte High School, so the ACE Academy, the Architecture, Construction, and Engineering Group, our project management team, architects, and our superintendent on site actually worked with them to follow along the progress of that project. So you see them getting a tour of our logistics center here in Kansas City, Kansas, as well as the architects presenting some of the early planning. That progressed to the bottom-left picture of Lee Moore, kind of taking them through the actual project that was going on at their school. So they really followed along a real-life project, which we know that that helps kids connect. Through that program, we actually hired Manny, who you see here with Mr. Dunn, as an intern. So Manny worked in our building for eight weeks before he went to MCC. Great experience. You can see him presenting to a big room of professionals at J.E. Dunn, along with his principal and his career and tech teacher. So we also had Rick from Sumner with us for two summers while he was in high school. He then went on to Pitt State to actually pursue a degree in construction management, and then we were able to hire him as a college intern as well. So two great experiences with your students that were meaningful for our teams as well. Finally, here's just another sampling. We can't talk about it all. Doug was a great filter for all the schools that we wanted to work with, but from, you know, financial literacy classes to tech, technology, you see the virtual reality experience here, to tours at J.E. Dunn headquarters, we just wanted to be all-in with your students, and it was really a great process. And whether we're onsite anymore or not, we will continue to be a partner in that regard. Okay, budget.
Budget, fun time. All right. So now we're up to where we are today, our total bond budget. I think, you know, the team has done great work here, and frankly, I'm very pleased to be able to come and talk about where we stand with our budget here. And this is where you start to see some of those acronyms or abbreviations. I talked about the DDM. Starts off on the left, work package. I'm not sure why that's called work package, but I'm going to point that out. Yeah, it depends on which one of those categories, whether it's a district-deferred project, district-deferred maintenance project, a J.E. Dunn, the construction manager at risk. Then we have our design and soft costs, and we get to the total budget there of $235 million. The next, the second column, actually, third column over, total cost to date, that is actually, as of right now, to date, all the costs for each one of those categories. And then, so then you move over to the remaining, you see a negative number in DDM, and again, those are primarily because of we had that $4.5 million lighting project and a couple other things that we did not budget originally, but we were able to absorb. But I didn't change the budget, so that's why that's like that. The overall savings with the construction manager at risk, hard costs, design and soft costs, were on the plus side. So our total budget then, we have $3,380,000. We have to subtract our finance fees that we've paid to date, and that, you see the number there, a little almost 1.2 million, which leaves us a number of $2,189,000 as unencumbered available funds. And then we'll add, we earned earnings from our investment with the bond of almost 6.8. So our current bank balance right now is $8,981,000. The next two numbers here, we'll talk about on the next two slides, really. There are some anticipated outstanding costs. I'll go over those, which leaves us total available bond funds of just shy of $4,600,000. So these are those anticipated outstanding costs. We do still have, we're working at New Stanley right now, doing the secure entry kitchen update. So actually, frankly, I think it's a little bit lower as of right now. I got a pay application recently. We are doing an additional parking lot over at TA Edison to give them to support that staff there a little bit. We have talked about and are in the process of doing some additional rooftop unit, is what that stands for. That's the HVAC components for these buildings, replacing some rooftop units that really were put in. Most of them would have been back in the 2002 bond, if you remember that one. And again, the average lifespan of a rooftop unit, I think it's about 15 years, so we're due to replace those. Bethel remodel is still an outstanding project that we haven't moved forward on yet. Dennis will talk about that a little bit more. And then there's also the Carl B. Bruce field upgrades that we want to make to, we're planning a walking path around that, actually doing a little bit more grading and some seating, putting some soccer goals and a football goal, so they can at least practice some football up there. So those are additional costs. So that's where that estimate came from. And then I think the next slide is Dennis's, so I'll turn that over to him. And this goes to the last line on the spreadsheet.
So this, Pete, this slide and the next two slides are just for informational purposes for you all to consider. Of the $4.6 million that's left, Doug mentioned that we had 1.2 million originally approved in the budget for Devaughn Elementary to be converted to Early Childhood Center. We had an architect to take a look at that building, and the cost came in about $4 million to get that done. So that would take an additional $3 million of the 4.6, if that's the will of the board. In the next bond, I'm sure replacing Central Middle School would be a high priority. Unless we find some land to purchase to build Central on, you're going to have to have some swing space, because you have to build Central on this current site. And so I suggest we try to go out and find land to move, to purchase, so we can build a new Central on, and keep the kids in school while we build that building. The building across from Slagle Stadium is still available. We had done some research on that building. It could be used for a tech center project or even an alternative school, which you can also renovate for a fax. So these were just things that Doug and I and some team members thought that could be good uses of the 4.6 million, but as I said, that's at the will of the board. The future bond program, back when, in 2016, these are the projects that was not approved in the $235 million. So I thought I'd bring the list back out to remind everyone of the projects that, like I said, was not approved in the original $235. And I will point out that the cost was the 2016 cost, and those have gone up. So you would not be to build a middle school for 30 million. So that's just the list of the projects. And I did add, at the very bottom, the main library. I know that's a topic that you all are having discussions on, on trying to replace the main library. You can include it in a bond if you like. And before I take questions, Lee wants to do one more thing.
Thank you, Dennis. So again, thank you very much for the opportunity. We actually made a little gift for you guys, a token of our appreciation, just to maybe commemorate the success of the bond, the excitement of it, all the different projects that were involved. We had our team from J.E. Dunn, some of the team members signed it, but anyway, want to give that to you guys. You know, this wasn't an easy bond issue, but it was a fun one, and it was more than just construction, you know, bringing in the community, getting the student engagement, building relationships, and definitely very important to our company, and we, again, thank you guys for the opportunity and hope to work with you guys in the future. And we're still working on another project here for a year, so you'll see us around a little bit, but thank you. And I guess if there's nothing else, we'll open it up for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Covington, Lee, and team. Doug, thank you all. And as you mentioned, there are just so many people who helped to make this happen, so we do just want to thank everyone and especially our community who came behind to support this initiative. You made this happen for our students and for your kids, so thank you all for making this happen, and thank you all. I'll just comment, I know we've done a few of the ribbon cuttings when the schools were empty, and hopefully, maybe you've had a chance to go back when there's kids in there, because it's got a whole different feel from those days of the ribbon cuttings where it was empty, and to see all the kids running in there, just really impactful. So thank you to you and your team for all the work that you all have done, Doug and Dennis for helping to lead this over this last years. Thank you. So we'll open up. I know Dr. Jaeger had a comment, and then we'll come here. Dr. Jaeger?
Yes, my question, thank you so much for all that you've done and the recommendations. I know this was a big project. You know, when I came to the board, we talked a lot about minority women-owned businesses. So as we, I heard the report from the minority-owned business perspective, did this include professional services as well? And also, I believe that it was asked previously, although we wanted to get more minority businesses on directly with your services, were the contractors also held to a certain standard to outsource to minority-owned businesses? So was that included in the numbers that was reported by, I think her name is Keisha?
So we did not track the sub-tiers below that initial sub-tier. So the numbers that you saw, and I'll see if I can get back to it, but the numbers were basically just the contractors that we contracted with directly, and yes, a lot of those contractors have two, three different sub-tier contractors. We did not track down to that level. I think the first question was, did this include professional services? And so there is an architect, an engineer, consultant side that isn't under our contract, so those are not in these numbers. I think that answers both, I think.
And so if we do go for a second bond, I would strongly recommend that the board considers including the minority-owned women requirement and the professional services. I think sometimes that may be what's also missing out on some of our contracts as it relates to, you know, some of the subcontractors, the electrical, as was mentioned.
Thank you, Dr. Jaeger. Ms. Humphries?
Yes, I want to say it's been a pleasure working with you. Our schools are beautiful. Our community appreciates the work you've done. Like Randy said, we appreciate the community for that 79% passing of that bond, because come visit our new schools, you'll just see how inspiring it is for our students to know that our community values them, that we want them to have modern spaces, just like every other kid. And then Doug, I have a request. When we're looking at how to spend that money, it's been brought to my attention that maybe we need to look at the restroom facilities and the bus barns.
I do know the restroom facilities at the transportation offices have been an issue, so that certainly is the pleasure of the board.
Thank you, Ms. Humphries. Ms. Page?
Yeah, again, want to say thank you, but my concern still, and I've said this from the beginning, it was nothing new. What about some jobs for the kids in this community? You spoke of two internships. I'd like to see more, because people made a lot of money. You made a lot of money. So is there some way we can give that back in our communities and hire some of these kids, give more an opportunity to have an internship? That has been my plea from the beginning. Because it was a little disheartening when you go to the groundbreaking ceremonies and the kids don't see themselves. And I know there are other people of color who are doing construction work, but I didn't see many out there. You can count on your hand the number of women. I saw you. I didn't see many Asians, and if we want to inspire these kids, they need to see themselves. So I plead with you to try to include more, because you have the opportunity, you got the money, so let's spread the wealth.
That's true. I just wanted to say thank you. I came on four years ago and I learned a lot as far as what you were doing. And when I saw this, it made me feel good to know that I was helpful in making sure that it has taken place. And I just wanted to say thank you, thank you, and hopefully, we can continue working together, because we, our community, can see the great work that you have done, the support that we're giving to try to make sure that our students are going to be educated. And I really appreciate what you have done. Thank you.
Ms. Clark, go ahead.
Mr. Clemens, this is a question for you, well, maybe it's a comment, I'm not sure. Is there a protocol in place? I drive by schools and I live near a school as well, and I just want to make sure we're able to keep up with our schools. And so when things are happening, I was in a playground the other day and the tetherball hole was bent. And so what's the process, or is there a process in place to make sure that we're keeping our schools? This was one of our new schools as well.
And I know what you're talking about, because there is a process in place. Yes, there is. There actually is a work order process that when something happens, any kind of repair needs to happen, really, the head custodian for us, they're our eyes and ears, they're the person that is designated as the site administrator on our work order program. So if the principal or staff have issues like that, they put in a work order, it comes to us. We get about 1,200, actually a little bit more of those a month that go, and I have it, they route directly to the proper craft, and they will schedule it and get back out there and get that fixed. So yes, there is a process. And typically, it's about a week. I need to check on that one, because I don't know where we're at on that, other than I do have a little bit of a minor staffing issue there, but yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much to you all and to your teams. Lee, again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Want to take this?
Yes.
See that?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Very nice.
So before, yeah, let's give Lee and the team a round of applause, and thank you. So before we move on with our agenda, I've been getting some looks, so we'll take a quick seven-minute recess, and then we will come back to continue with our agenda. All right, we're going to come back to order, please, and continue on with, oh, sorry. Sorry, gentlemen. Okay, thank you. So we're going to come back to order. Thank you so much. We will continue with our agenda. First up on our board updates is a presentation by Mr. Stephen Linkus.
Good evening, Board President Lopez, Vice President Clark, fellow members of the board, Dr. Stubblefield. Thank for an opportunity to come back for a second presentation in regards to potential staff vaccination policies. Just a current update of where we are. So our last update of data, which we will update again tomorrow on the weeks of September 10 through the 17th, we had 46 confirmed student positive cases and 10 staff. We also have the running total through the year that is listed below that. Some other information that came up previously was President Biden discussed the federal employee testing mandate. Dr. Megan Cook was able to attend some sessions. And what we were able to find out is that they're expecting something to come their way in December with some types of explanation. And the possible and likely rollout from the federal government would be in January. So that's the information that they are receiving in this meeting. I'm going to come back to the talent ed piece after I do the policies just because I have a video that I'd like you to see as well. So we're going back to our policies. And this is what we looked at last time. And just as a refresher, sample policy one requires all eligible staff to vaccinate. And we used November 19th as a placeholder. We're at the behest of the board. If the board decided a different date, if you decided to pass a policy, we would, we would work with that. If proof of full vaccination is not on file by that date, then they'd be required to participate in weekly COVID testing. And one of the caveats or nuggets that was thrown in this particular sample was five days of additional sick leave on the 2122 annual contract. Policy number two that we brought forward is pretty much a mirror image of one outside of, instead of the term required, it was highly encouraged. So we're, wouldn't necessarily, you guys wouldn't necessarily be requiring people to do it, but you'd be highly encouraging them to go get this done with the same effects of if they don't have full vaccination status, they would still have to go out and test weekly. And I shouldn't say go out, they would test weekly internally because we would be offering those services. Sample policy three, again, uses the language highly encourage, all staff to get vaccinated against COVID-19 on or before November 19th. If it's not on file, it'd be once again, the testing protocol. The one difference here is we threw in the caveat of if they test positive for COVID and they are fully vaccinated, and we have that on file, they will not have to use personal sick time. We know that's a caveat and it potentially could be something to incentivize individuals to go out and get fully vaccinated. Just wanted to reiterate what our implementation timeline was. It will take roughly up to 45 days because there are some, we're going to have to do some, some work on this. So there's going to be some sample schools that we'll work with. So we'll start it small during this time so that after, until around the 45 days, we can go whole hog and do the whole district. But we do need to look at what's working, what stumbles are we going to have so that we correct those as we're getting the whole district going. The health data specialists were mentioned before, the weekly surveillance testing for student athletes, the testing of non-vaccinated adults, staff members, and with our current company that we use, and at this point, there is no plan to go away from them, they guarantee on the contract within 24 hours. So depending on what time we did testing, we would have it the next day. If it's at four o'clock, then we may have it late in the day, but we would have it by that time. So I'm going to go back. One of the things we talked about in this is proof of full vaccination. So one of the things is we looked at our systems, and I want to thank Human Resources and Dr. Knight Beck for doing some work on setting it up to where you can upload a copy or a picture of your vaccination card. So we as cabinet were some of the initial people to do so. I've uploaded mine. It was very easy. I just took a picture of it, loaded it, and was able, sent it to myself in an email and then loaded it on a computer. Those who are more phone literate than I am can probably just load it up from their phone. But it was a very easy process. It took probably less than a minute. What I'm going to show you now is the actual process of how we would do this. So let me go ahead and get this started for you.
Hello. Today I get the privilege of showing you how employees will upload their vaccination cards. We're going to go ahead and utilize our talent ed record system to go ahead and use that as a repository for those cards. What we've done is we set up a checklist within the system that will be assigned to each employee. As you can see here, there's a vaccination card COVID-19 checklist. We'll go to ahead and bulk assign, we'll bulk assign to the whole district. But in this case, we're just going to go ahead and do that to me. So that way I get the notification. Once I click save, that go ahead, go ahead and triggers an email to the employee that they'll receive at their district email. What you'll see here at the top in a second is that email will come across, looks like this. And then if I go to my email, I'll get an email that looks similarly to this. It'll have some background information to why, why we're doing this, and then how to upload your vaccination card, ways to upload it with the requirements, and then some approval processes that we have in place. And then those that do not have laptops can use their mobile devices, and that has instructions on how to do that. Additionally, those that are having issues accessing their talent ed system, there's a link to forgot passwords so they can reset it. And if they have additional issues, they can contact HR. So when we go back to our talent ed and then click on my tasks, you'll see that there is a vaccination card upload spot. You click view, and then you can go ahead and click upload. Now, if you're on your mobile device when this happens, it'll just open up a camera or allow you to upload a picture via your mobile device, and then it'll look just the same. Once that happens, it is now registered and it is now dropped off of their, of their record or their tasks, excuse me. Then that triggers an email to the person approving. In this case, right now, I'm their approver. So I'll get something like this. It says, there's something that requires your approval. And now I'll go to my task list to approve. And then what we can do is if we go to configuration and we want to do a report, we just look at reports, checklist. And then if you go down to vaccination cards, we can see who has and who has not submitted a vaccination card. And that can be exported for records. So in this case, you can see this green dot says that I have uploaded but has not been approved. So the approver can click there or go to their task list, look at the document itself, and then deny, request revisions, where it'll go back or approve. In this case, we'll approve. You'll see that it'll turn check mark, and now it is complete.
Thank you for watching that. We just wanted to get that out there because it sounds more complicated than it is. It was fairly easy to do. And most people can use their phone to do that. The other thing that we've talked about is as HR will be checking these records, the other thing is we're going to have a secondary check and we're going to have to work with our health director and health coordinator. Because what has happened across the country is you've had people do counterfeit cards, you've had people sign the cards themselves. And we're not making any accusations on anyone, but this is just what's happened nationally and in different places. So that way, we're ensuring that we are getting cards from a health department or the specific area where they went and got vaccinated so that everything is above board. Just going back to this and looking at vaccination data, we do know that our classified staff was one of the areas it was a little lower in some of the data that I know the board received. I've talked to our current health coordinator. We're talking about, we're going to talk to Mr. Clemmons and also Ms. Miller, Lenora Miller, about finding a way to set up and meet with our trade men and some of those other groups and figure out a way to get whether, a computer in hand, whether it's an iPad or a Chromebook or something mobile, and hopefully get more data from our classified staff. We did get good turnout from our certified, that's who the majority of our people were that did the survey. So we definitely want to beef those numbers up because we do have a diverse workforce. We do want to make sure that all our workers do have access to that opportunity. And as they do that, they will have the same options as before. They can share if they're vaccinated, they could share they're not vaccinated, or they can say choose not to respond or what have you. But do you know that is something we are working on? We've had discussions, we're going to be rolling that out soon because we do want to have as accurate account as possible so that whatever decision the board makes, we're able to better assist in mobilizing the work that will go forward. So I'll, let me get back in. I'll just put the question slide up. So if there's any questions from the board.
Thank you, Mr. Linkus, for the information. Thank you, staff, for putting that together. I'll open it up to the board for questions or comments. This is, we've seen this information before. I think it's important to realize there's a lot that goes into this conversation and how we want to approach this conversation and, you know, how this ultimately impacts our staff, our students, and which direction we want to go as we move forward. I did have one question, not that you, you're going to have the answer, and I apologize for not asking this sooner. But in terms of financial cost of what that, this looks like to, once we implement, to pay for testing, or what, what are the financial implications? Again, I didn't ask ahead of time, so I apologize. So you can get that back to us later time.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely work on that, Mr. Lopez and-
And the testing, actually, majority of it is covered by a grant through the Kansas Department of Health. Like, they, they have grant money available. So we, I believe, are accessing that. But if you want what the cost of the grant is, we can bring that.
Thank you.
And Mr. Lopez, we would also want to look at, because of school size, the number of people we're going to need to test, we're also going to have to budget out what that's going to look like. So those would be some pieces that we would be bringing forth. And that's part of that 45-day process we talked about because we know a school of 250 with X amount of staff who may or may not be vaccinated, testing is going to look a little differently than, and I'll just say wind up, with 1,700 kids and significantly larger staff. So we will look at that, and that's part of our trial runs, and we will bring that information forward and, you know, get as close to the, on the money as we can for the budget aspect.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from board members? Dr. Wen, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. You've already stated this, but help me understand. One, the five additional sick leave days is only in policy one?
It was in policy one and two.
Oh, two.
Yes, ma'am. We, we put it, I can pull it back up. We actually put that in policy one. And then it's also in policy two with just the caveat of one is a requirement and the other would be highly encouraging. Yes, ma'am.
And then you have three hired staff? We've already hired one. So is that three additional?
That would be three additional that we're budgeted for. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you. Again, these are sample policies, right? So it is the will of the board. If we wanted to tweak any of the language in there. So what's presented is just an example of not necessarily what we would be held to right now. So Ms. Humphries, you had a question?
You're reading my mind, Randy. On policy three, it says, if you test positive and provided proof, you don't need to use your personal sick leave?
Yes, ma'am. So that's why we would have the, the upload of the vaccinations. So that way, if I were to test positive, but I had been fully vaccinated, then it'd be an easy for us to look up and say, okay, then Stephen Linkus would not be charged sick time.
But is there a limit? Is there a limit to how many days they can be out? Because we know some people that test positive for COVID aren't out very long and other people are out for a long time. So I'm just wondering about the details of that one.
So currently, if you test positive and/or are close contact, your quarantine or the time that you're out, they're not, we're not requiring anyone to use their sick time. This sample policy would be shifting for that, but my assumption, we would be treating it like we treat it now if you're vaccinated. It's like if you're out on 10 days of quarantine, you quarantine, you don't use your sick time if you're out because you are ill. And it's work-related, we don't require, we wouldn't require you to do that if you're vaccinated.
So if I test positive and I have 30 sick leave days in my bank, I don't need to use those 30 days?
Currently, if it's work-related.
Right.
Yes.
But what if I'm out four months?
If it's work-related, we haven't put a cap on it.
Yeah.
Yeah. We haven't, my knowledge, had that issue. But what was continued in practice this current year was what was in place last school year.
That's just a question I have because we're telling them that they test positive, they don't have to use any sick leave. And is there a cap on that? Or is it just open ended? That's just my question.
And that would be at the pleasure of the board if they wanted to have a cap.
Yes, Dr. Wen.
Thank you, Mr. President. You've said it, and we understand it. Does it have to be clear that it has to be work-related? Because what if I go to a super spreader concert and come back and tested positive? How do you?
So currently with our contact tracing, if I went to a super spreader concert and I tested positive and then Ms. Clark inadvertently tests positive and she, that was her exposure to me, then she wouldn't have to use her time. And if there was no source from work from- And if there was no source from work for me, for me, then I would be using my time, if that makes sense.
Right, so does the real, the real question is, does that have to be written?
Does that have to be written? If you wanted to do what we currently are doing in practice, just work, I I would say yes, the work related portion would have to be included in there.
Thank you, I likewise agree.
So, uh, another question, Mr. Linkus and and um, and I didn't send this to you ahead of time, so I apologize, but um, just, you you know, you talked last time about the um, vaccination and you referenced it today in terms of the number of vaccinations amongst our our employees and we're trying to figure out what that what that is, what that data shows. Been asked a lot um, by folks, what are the implications on staffing? And we're currently seeing shortage of subs, shortage of bus drivers, shortage in 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 other areas. Um, would we anticipate, one way or the other, whether we adopted a policy or not, um, how this impacts potential staffing needs in the areas where we are short staff, like busing, nutrition and other areas?
So I I think the 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 option of testing alleviates, but uh, just to use this word, a disciplinary type mentality, because it's not. It's giving the option still to the individual that if you want to go out and get your vaccinations and um, I I, we would encourage that, but if someone chooses not to, with the weekly testing, it still encourages an ability to go to work, an ability to be employed, and ability for us to keep people on the job. And because as you stated, there are some short areas and we do not want to accelerate any types of uh, you know, action like that, so that's why the sample policies did include that, so that way there was the option. Because you may have somebody with a specific medical. And and I'm not the nurse, so I don't want to sit and say this, but I do know there are some specific medical you know, states that someone can be in that they are not able to vaccinate for that reason. Um, in that way, and that's why we put the language eligible staff. So if there is something medical that can be, you know, from the doctor, we can go with that, so. We definitely don't want to penalize people, we want to encourage our workers to stay and we value them.
Thank you. Dr. Wen?
And I I, we had this discussion, Dr. Stubblefield. Did we ever determine if the contracted individuals are under the policy?
So we do have a lot of contracts and we would have to give contracted employees. Some of them, um, in some of the agreements, they they typically follow all of our policies, but some of them do not like um, necessarily some of our, you know, passive, they have it with their companies. But we would have to go through and either extend a new MOU or no one, or minimally ask them to test weekly if uh, or something like that. But we would have to look at each individual agreement and work through something.
And usually there is a clause about amending the contract, so.
Yes.
Because we want to keep everyone safe. Thank you.
And I'll I'll add to Dr. Wen's question around volunteers as well. Um, whether this would apply to any volunteers in the building um, that are coming to work with our students or not.
Currently for our volunteers, we don't like our standard requirements of physical and TV tests and those kind of things, we don't do that, so that would be something that that we would have to, the board would have to make a determination on regards, in regards to volunteer. Either they can show for vaccination or participate in the testing, but that would have to be a determination by the board.
Okay, and one last.
Dr. Wen, yes.
Thank you, Dr. Stubble, we will plan to continue providing vaccinations to the public, so there's no excuse if an individual says, I can't find, I don't have a doctor to go to or the health department, I don't have time. So that we will offer those opportunities.
The vaccinations, we do have a clinic coming up and then the health department did chair this morning in a meeting that they held with um, districts and governmental agencies that they are planning to expand their hours with the approval of the booster and they they're planning to make themselves more available and also they do have mobile clinics that organizations can reserve to be at different places if you are not doing an entire event.
Good, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, other questions? Uh, Ms. Clark?
I have, I do have a few questions, I'm not sure that we will know the answer and I know this is just framework. So one thing that came to mind is with sample two, if I am not eligible, um, am I, then do I not get the five days? Just something that will come up as a question. My health won't allow me, but you're giving additional days. And then also with that, if I test positive and I've had the vaccination, what does my time look like there? Am I still out a certain amount of time? I know there's been a little bit of difference in the amount of time that people are out. Kind of goes back to what we talked about just a little bit ago. And then one of the other things that I have questions on that I know has come up quite a bit is on if it's not work related, so I'm not, maybe I'm not vaccinated, maybe I am vaccinated. Um, I test positive and I'm still being made to use my my time. That question's come up, come up a lot, so then we go into a lot of people that are unpaid. And so those those things do concern me, the the pay and 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 how do you trace it back? And then there's also been a lot of conversations about, is the is the trace back fair? So just because, I mean, you have people that are all over the building and they've been in a lot of different places and maybe it's not as quick to figure out that me and Dr. Stubblefield were sitting next to each other, maybe this is a cafeteria worker. And so how do you trace that back? Now you're sending me home, you're not paying me, and maybe it was work related, how do you know? Um, so just things to think about as we're putting a policy in place.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question as it relates to backup plans. We see in Missouri since the vaccination requirement start that they're having problems with their bus drivers, for instance. Parents are driving bus, volunteers are driving the bus because they have a shortage in that classified area that you discussed that are not vaccinated. So therefore they're losing staff and they're losing it in the areas for their support. What backup plan has been created to fill in those positions? And then again, if we're not, if we're contracting workers to come in to fill in for those who maybe get a false positive or maybe decide not to work for the district if this policy is in place, what is our backup? Because we saw a number of workers who walked out of places this past week, this, you know, since places are beginning to put a requirement in. So what is our backup plan if we start losing staff um, based upon if there is a past po- uh, policy that is passed?
So I think the um, foundation of our policy is the option for testing and a lot of the places where it, you're seeing the shortages because it's required and there's not a testing option. And I know there may be exceptions. And honestly, depend, we give three sample policies, the board can um, work with Mr. Goheen and tweak any of those. Those were just examples that we came across and not any that we're saying this one over that one. It really will come back to ultimately what um, the board would like to move forward with. We just wanted to provide the examples of school districts, but we don't, Dr. Jaeger. If people are opposed to testing, um, we don't have a we haven't thought through like a a backup plan of what will we do in that particular situation, but we could definitely explore that.
Then my second part to that goes back to um, someone mentioned about if they have COVID, if they already have the vaccinations yet, they test positive for COVID. Um, we know now there's a third booster out and those who have already been vaccinated are testing positive as well for COVID. Is there going to be, uh, has there been thought about uh, sample tracing of testing everyone? Or testing a certain population of people that still, because although you have the shots, you could still carry the COVID um, traced and pass it on to others?
I think at this point, we're just going to highly encourage people because we are one of the groups that falls under the ability to get the third shot, so to get the booster. I think that um, that's the direction that we're looking to go at this point. We have, if the board were to choose to say that was something that you guys would want in policy, then we as a staff would, you know, assist in making that happen. But at this point, uh, we will just encourage and say if you've gotten your first two, um, you're now eligible after six months to go get the third. And I know there was a some communication that Mr. Birch sent out discussing that, so I know some decisions have been made locally to offer that to to educators. As well as other groups.
To answer your question in regards to if you're vaccinated, can you test? Right now, anybody, we have tests available. If people feel like they've either been exposed or experiencing symptoms, um, they have access to the tests as far as requiring vaccinated individuals to be tested. Um, I think my understanding from um, our protocols in the health department is if they either are exposed or feel like they're experiencing symptoms, otherwise they are, it's not um, recommended that they test. But I'm not a medical expert, I'm just going off of what has been shared by the health department in regards to what our current practices is. If currently, if you are vaccinated and you experience symptoms and or you feel like you were exposed and you want to just confirm, we do have tests available.
And adding on what Dr. Stubblefield says, with the masking and the other mitigation processes, we are following best practices that have been brought forth by the CDC as well as uh, the unified government and our chief epidemiologist.
Thank you, so board, I just want to get, make sure that we give staff direction. And if this is something we want them to continue to pursue, to find language that we would like to see more of. You know, I don't want to cut the conversation short, but I want to make sure that staff and need to work with Mr. Goheen, that we provide some direction to them moving forward.
So are we saying at this point, direction meaning um, we mandate vaccination or we not mandate vaccination? I know there's three different policies in front of us, but is that really what we're we're we need to make a decision on?
I I think according to board policy, when there's policy is three reads or three times. So if you wanted uh, one area for us to focus on, you could tell us and we can work with Mr. Goheen to come back with a policy for you to vote on the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it it it's not exactly policy, but historically that's what the board's followed in terms of policy adoption. Um, if you guys are wanting to adopt a policy, we just, we need some direction from the board as to what you want in the policy so that we can put a final policy together rather than bringing you multiple options and say, here's the policy based upon what you're wanting us to do. And then you can adopt it and we can move forward. That's what we need, we need direction.
Uh, Mr. Lopez, I would like to make a motion that we accept policy one. Because already we got that highly encouraged. We're talking about public health and highly encouraged is not working for us right now. And if we want this to end, then we have to be bold. And I would like to make a motion that we go with policy one.
Second?
There's a motion and a second, I'll open it up for questions or discussion around sample policy, example policy one.
I might make one comment, um, with with that motion, are there anything that is not in that sample policy one that the board or board members would like included in it? So, because these are sample policies, so i- if there's something in addition to what is in the policy one sort of bullet point guideline that Ms. Page has moved for, is there anything else that somebody wants to see in the policy? So as we're drafting it, we make sure we include whatever you guys want.
I'd like to maybe see, uh, to Dr. Wen's point earlier, making it explicit if uh, around whether you've been, you've been exposed in the workplace and what, how that affects your sick leave or not. Uh, so that there's no questions, I mean, if you've been exposed at work, um, that you don't have to use your sick leave. So I I think to your point, Dr. Wen, right, I I think that's something I'd like to see in there as well.
That was what I was going to say.
Policy one is mandating that all eligible, okay.
Yeah.
I would not be able to support that.
I would not.
I would not be able to support that either as a mandate.
Anything else that, so, I'm sorry, Dr. Jaeger, you were, I cut you off.
I would say, um, I think it's, it's important for us to realize that we can, we should highly encourage. And what also makes me uneasy is the fact that we do not believe staff. It's really sad when we feel like we have to think that people would make up a fake validation of a vaccinated card in order to not have to do whatever. That's really sad that we cannot trust staff to be honest. And if we're going to those extents to believe people are being honest or not, we ask this staff to work without a vaccine. We've asked them to come in, be dedicated, serve us, everything without a question of vaccination. So now we're telling them in essence, we do not trust your judgment or you have to take all time to go to a doctor to get an exception and to go through hoops when we know that there's positions right outside of our area in the pet district that they can walk over to. We would be the only school in the area, Wyandotte County, requiring this, which would be another hardship to our citizens. So I I cannot support that based on that.
And and Mr. Lopez, in response to that, this is a public health crisis. This mess will never end if we keep saying, well, we just encourage you. And it doesn't mean that we don't trust you. Because it bothers me to think, if I go to the hospital, I don't want to go to a hospital and the people at the hospital haven't been vaccinated? Then what does that say for me? And I don't like it, if I was a teacher right now, having to come in here, yeah, they deal with a lot, they shouldn't have to. But they should also be safe and the kids should be safe. And it's discouraging, right now we got, we highly encourage you. And you see where we are as a society. And it makes no sense. How many people have to die? Or get infected, because it's not working, highly encourage is not working.
The only thing that would change with this policy is a long line of our employees waiting to get tested. A long line of our employees who decided to be unvaccinated um, by choice is waiting in a longer line and not getting the benefits. According to what this says is, you know, if we approve number one, then number one clearly says that we're going to put it on file, although it's on file, we're not trusting you to do it or not. But the reality is they still have a choice. And so them not choo- choosing not to get vaccinated, again, is a choice that they may not change. And so the result is them waiting in long lines to get tested. And according to Lanko's slides that he presented before, shows that we may have more staff out due to a false positive, false positive happened. And it also proved that we may, we need to be prepared for staff not coming in to work for us. And that's a reality that has not been addressed. What happens when twenty or thirty of our staff that we need decide to walk out? That's not been addressed.
Again, you say all this, but that's not necessarily true, you're speculating. And again, with, it's public health. That's the part I don't get that doesn't make sense. What's good for the public? Public health, let's keep people safe. And I don't think that's a bad thing, because it's easy to say, well, I'm not going to do it, but my actions impact my neighbor. And at some point it has to stop. We keep sitting around here waiting as a society for people, oh, they have a choice. They'll do it and they're not doing it. And it'll never be resolved and we'll be in the same old mess. If we look at societies where they made a stand, things got much better and things have turned around. But when we look at the United States, we get caught up on so much madness that doesn't make sense. And we're trying to keep the kids safe, keep the teachers safe. You have a choice, either get vaccinated or you get a test. It doesn't necessarily mean the lines are going to be long.
Thank you, Ms. Page, thank you, Dr. Jaeger. Ms. Drew, I want to make sure if you have, um, you have an opportunity in case you had something you want to share, the language that you wanted to see um, in any of the samples.
I'm fine with the way everything is written, I'm just ready to vote.
Thank you, I would be, um, and and I appreciate you, Ms. Ms. Page and what what you've shared. Um, I wonder if we, if we switch the language a little bit and required or ask for testing of all staff with an opt-out. with an opt-out of showing your vaccine, proof of vaccination. Would that, that change? So you're still, still requiring testing or you've got folks who have been vaccinated.
You've got to be able to prove you had it. I got my card. You saying it and you can take that any way you want is not enough. You got to be able to show and show some proof. We go to vote, we show our ID. You go to the hospital, if I got insurance, I got an insurance card. I got to show something. And we have, and I'm not saying the teachers are going to lie or any other staff would lie. But you do have to document and prove something. You just can't walk in there and say, hey, I'm tested. Okay, well, that's cool. Show me your card. You don't walk in to vote, hey, I'm registered. No, you have to document it. Now, we're getting a little too crazy.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Page. Any other?
So the documentation that we're talking about, are we talking about where Mr. Lincoln showed us that you have to be able to upload your card into the system? Okay, and I could go either way with that. I actually agree with Dr. Jaeger. There are some companies that say put your dates in and we trust our employees and we trust their integrity. And then I could go the other way of show your card, but I think we need to have something in place. I lost my card. Like, what do I, what do I do in that situation? But I do want to make sure in all of this that we, that we show our employees that yes, we do trust you. And how many really are going to gamble with their, with their responsibilities and their jobs in that way? So that's, that's how I feel about actually having to say, here's my card, it's on your file versus here are my dates and it's in your system.
And that was part of the reason we went with the picture because that's part of that trust process is here's your card. We're not going to have you physically bring it in because, you know, if you get 2,000 cards, that's a lot of, lot of copying. But I think it's trusted. They'll upload it. We can then do that. And then we have our checks and balances on that end.
And that's what I wanted to be clear on.
Well, I just want to be clear on our current practice because I don't want people to be misunderstood. Right now, for our students and our staff, if you are considered a close contact and you, we require you to show proof of vaccination, your vaccination, so you will not have to quarantine.
Okay.
So that is, when you look at our processes now, there are individuals who have provided it so they wouldn't have to quarantine as a close contact. And that's been for students and staff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So Ms. Humphries.
All staff are required when they're hired to take a TB test, correct?
Correct.
And they have, and that result has to be turned into the district, correct?
Correct.
So showing proof of vaccination for COVID is similar to proving that you were tested for TB?
Yeah.
I mean, just, that's, that's the way it looks to me. It's showing the same thing. You're showing that you have proof that you've had the vaccination.
Thank you, Ms. Humphries. So there's a motion and a second on the floor. Thank you for the conversation around looking at policy, example policy one that was presented. So I'm going to ask Ms. Smith to do a roll call vote, please. Thank you.
With your addition.
Sorry, Dr.?
With your addition.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. With the addition of specifying replace exposure versus outs, outside exposure. Thank you.
This is for policy number one. I just want to be 100%.
Yes, sample policy number one.
Policy one, okay.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, no.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, no.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, no.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Jaeger?
Dr. Jaeger, no.
Motion does not carry. Thank you.
Mr. Lopez?
Humphries?
I would like to make a motion that we have staff flush out the sample policy two with the addition that volunteers are considered same as staff as regards to vaccination or testing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. I'll open the floor. I would still like to see language around exposure and how that relates to sick time or time off.
I agree.
I agree with that as well.
Other discussion, other things that you would like to see in the policy sample that gets brought back?
I think the, one of the. Hey, Dr. Jaeger.
Clarification. So you're adding volunteers to this policy. Is that correct?
Yes, because if they're going to be at our schools, we're, it's public health. Being it is, then they should have to either show proof of vaccination or be tested weekly, just like our staff.
Thanks for clarifying.
Ms. Clark?
So one of the things that still kind of bothers me is bullet, bullet three. And do we look at if a staff member tests positive, there'd be a certain amount of days that they get paid? And is it the 10 days that they have to sit out or the, what is it, seven working days, maybe 10 days total? And they still get paid for that time versus us tracing it? How much time and effort does it take for your staff to trace this and, and try to pin it back to where it belongs versus saying you tested positive, you go home and you're out for this amount of time?
So I, I not only can speak to what was in place, I share for most districts. And there was a federal mandate to provide days. You were capped at 14 days. It didn't matter. Work-related or whatever. We were capped at 14 days and that, my understanding was put into place because we know people can test positive multiple times and/or they can be out for an extensive amount of time. So if you're going to cap it, I would say that's what was in place when there was a federal mandate for our employees. Last year was 14 days. That may be a baseline to start with. And currently, again, if it's work-related, we haven't had a cap. Most people, if you're quarantining, it's for 10 days. If you actually test positive and you're out longer than that, typically, if we follow our standard procedures, there is some documentation proved, like you have to be released from your doctor. Like if you are the person who tests positive, you have to produce a document saying you were released on a certain date. And that's what we have been honoring. Or, you know, you have proof of a negative, like there are some things like that that traditionally have been in place during this time.
And Ms. Clark, the language that Dr. Stubblefield is mentioning is on our COVID pages. And when we get to our flow charts, it does talk about when you would have to bring that doctor's note and so forth. So it does have that information that's easily accessible to our staff and community.
I think my overall point, just out of all of that, was what bucket should time come from? And I'm not expecting an answer, but what time should bucket, should time come from regardless of where, where you contacted COVID?
My question surrounds the five additional sick leave days. What is the wording around that? Because the five additional sick days, and we know that there's a number of positions that are hard to fill and many are covering other areas. What is language around that five additional sick leave days?
So that just came from, to incentivize people to possibly get a vaccine. If you show proof of vaccination or uploaded, you would just receive five additional days to your bucket. It doesn't, it's not related to you testing positive or having COVID. It was just to incentivize you to get a vaccination. And that was shared with us by KNEA as a recommendation. And so we included it. It would not impact what your current, what our current practice is, which is, I think that's where I would want clarity for staff. If we're saying you get five additional, are we still covering any work-related under our current practices? Or are you getting five additional and we're stopping that because that, this current sample is not clear given that we already have that practice in place?
Right. So I think I need more, Randy, more wording, more policy around that bullet three as well.
Thank you, Dr. Jaeger. I think that's something Mr. Gohean and staff can work through on the specific language that could be brought back. Thank you. Dr. Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. I would like to comment on Ms. Clark's concern. We're, we will have a total of four new staff dealing with COVID, correct?
We'll be hiring the three additional data people.
Right.
We're going to be bringing forward a health coordinator, it's another coordinator, but they'll be over the testing. They'll be overseeing that. And their number one responsibility will be making sure that individuals are testing. Those who aren't testing, reaching back out to supervisors so we can make sure that maybe they weren't absent or anything like that. But yes, their responsibilities.
Do they do any of the track, tracing?
We are, we have traces and we're actually doing interviews at this point for more traces. We're hiring four more.
So I believe that could address your concern that we have, you have plans to hire people to take that, to address that time element that perhaps you were concerned.
I agree.
So that should erase that concern.
Yes, ma'am. We're in interviews right now. We've done some interviews so that we're reviewing candidates, reviewing resumes. And we're looking to hire four right now as far as contact tracers. It'll get us, it increases efficiency just with more people. And then with the other individuals that we have listed, that'll help us on the testing end.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I think something that I can provide to the board sometime this week is the total number of staff that we currently have because we do currently have contact tracers. A coordinator and director of health service says that will start on Monday. And so what Mr. Lincoln's is saying is in addition to what we already have.
Okay. Thank you. That does clear that up.
Thank you. Thank you for the questions. Anything else, I'm going to ask Ms. Smith to do a roll call vote. I know, yes, Mr. Gohean?
I've got a question on this. I want to make sure I got this right. Ms. Humphries, when you're saying add volunteers, are the volunteers highly encouraged with testing or are they required?
This policy is highly encouraged. And if they're not vaccinated, then weekly testing, just like our employees.
Same as the employees. That's what I wanted to know. Okay.
I am just curious about the November 19th date. Is that, is that something that we, I mean, is that something we can move around?
Yeah, it was a date we put in there as a placeholder. We're at the behest of the board of whichever date you guys choose.
Okay.
And what we were saying, 45 days from when you, minimumly 45 days from when you make a decision. So we would, if it's today, it would be 40, minimumly, we'd need 45 days.
Yeah, you have to allow time for people to go get those.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Ms. Smith, roll call vote, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, no. It's a public health issue. We're going to keep playing.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Jaeger?
Dr. Jaeger, no. I, I do not like the addition of the volunteer being tested, but I'm looking forward to hash, continue to work on the policy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Board, Mr. Lincoln and staff for the discussion.
Thank you all.
We will continue with our agenda next up. Ask Ms. Romstead to come forward and give us an update on our athletics eligibility modification. Board, you'll remember we had a conversation on this at a previous board meeting. Good evening, Ms. Romstead.
Good evening, members of the board, President Lopez and Dr. Stubblefield. This is the second reading and I'm waiting for it to. Holy, I won't put my glasses on. Ah, thank you. The proposals to amend the district eligibility policy for athletics and activities. Specifically amend the district policy for the remainder of the academic school year. Any high school or middle school student below a grade point average of 2.0 or any failing grades on the mid-quarter and quarter grade reports will be required to participate in the student support plan at his or her school site in order to practice or play. Students who do not follow their SSP will not be allowed to practice or play. The current board policy, JAS, requires a student support plan defined below shall be designed by each high school site to meet the needs of individual students. Plan must contain one or more of the following. These are the three pieces that could be used. First one would be after-school tutoring prior to attendance of practice. Each school does have a minimum of 30 minutes from time schools out until practice begins. The athletic directors will be responsible for providing a weekly grade on a Wednesday to go into effect for the next week. This gives the students Thursday and Friday to make an appointment with teachers for the next week. When a student comes to the teacher for work, the teacher will sign a pass or a sheet to indicate the student has attended the appointment. That is collected and given to the coach prior to practice. If the student does not turn that in, then they don't practice. Athletic directors collect the signed sheets from coaches and follow up with teachers as needed. The other piece that some of the schools are utilizing are Wednesday early release tutoring where they have resources available with their supervision, academic support. Some examples that I was given is gear up and then where is a Wyandotte. The third one would be as documented by a principal-approved intervention plan. And again, the support plans will provide those students who have quarantined from school the support needed without losing the opportunity to represent their schools in athletics and activities. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Romstead. Questions? Ms. Humphries?
How long are you giving them to bring their grades up? And they go through the whole season under a student support plan with lower than 2.0 or an F? As long as they're showing up?
As long as they're showing up for the plan that they're supposed to be on. We're asking that they continue to practice and/or play. Coaches are, are highly involved in this and they all want their athletes eligible for the next semester. So there are a lot of eyes on that. But yes, that's what we're asking.
So they could go the whole basketball season technically as long as they're showing up for their tutoring with their grades low? That's, that's what you're saying?
We're asking to remove the suspension of play and practice, yes.
So there's no time period. They're not sold. You have to work intensively for two to three weeks to get back up?
No, we're asking to be removed for the remainder of the school year.
That's what I'm saying. There's no incentive for them to bring their grades up if they can show up for tutoring. Correct?
Ms. Humphries, I agree with what you're saying. I think the reason I'm asking this is because we have students that are being quarantined different times throughout. And so, no, there's not a specific time based on the fact that we may have teachers out at the same time. That's why the flexibility is being asked.
And I do want to offer one clarification, Ms. Humphries. Based off what's shared here, CAESIA does require you have to be passing five classes. So if they hit semester and they are not, the CAESIA rule would kick in. But to your point, because there's not like you have two weeks from when you return or that kind of thing, technically what you're saying is accurate. Like if there's no, like two weeks from when you received a grade and if there were, if there's a case for a teacher, so some of those, an exception can be made or that kind of thing. But if you don't have an endpoint, you're correct that it could go on unless they hit a semester and run into the CAESIA requirement, which is that you pass five or more classes.
So they could be failing one class and we don't have any, anything to hold over their head technically if we pass this? Because as long as they show up for the tutoring, it doesn't matter how their grade goes up or down.
Yes, now, and if that's something that.
This open-endedness bothers me.
I mean, I'm saying that we could technically add some sort of specified time period, be it progress report, two weeks, quarter, any of those, that direction of the board. But this one is probably saying as long as they are engaging.
Because that has been the carrot for some of the kids to get their grades up is that they couldn't participate in their extracurricular activities. Because that has been the carrot for some of the kids to get their grades up, is that they couldn't participate in their ac- extracurricular activities. If we take that away, then what are we replacing it with?
I, I'd like to say something, because the current policy does have the two weeks after the progress reports that the grades must be raised, uh, no Fs uh to play or practice. Um, if a student currently in your policy, if a student is passing at that point, then they're allowed to practice the, play and practice the rest of the semester. There's no other checkpoint through the semester. So your current policy talks about, and you can see it, I think, in the top sentence, at the mid-quarter or quarter-grade reports. That's when that policy goes into effect, and then they're given basically ten days to get the Fs up, to uh get the GP up. And that that starts at progress report. So the next progress report would start the second quarter.
I understood that our specifically athletes are um, they report the grades eligibility to the coaches every week.
I, I implemented asking them to look at grades each week, but that's not part of the district policy. That's something I've asked, because I know it's important.
So it's been operating procedure, but not policy?
Correct. But it has been the operating procedure since I've been here. Because I wanted to catch kids, you know, because I saw when I got here that we had kids eligible at the progress report period, and then there was no checkup on them until quarter, and then we would start the next one over. And so I am the one that said, no, let's, let's look at grades every week, and let's make sure that coaches are aware, uh, that the kids are aware, that they're not progressing.
Well, that, that was the operating procedure when my grandchildren were in sports, that coaches gotta report every week for eligibility. So it may not have been, like you said, a policy, but most of our schools were following that, to my knowledge. I, I have a very hard time supporting lowering academic expectations and saying that a minimum of a half hour per day. That we need to, our kids need to know that we are here to educate them academically and socially and emotionally. But we need to have those expectations. If they're struggling in a class and they're getting an F, then we need to provide more support for that particular class in learning. And saying that it's more important, or it's just as, I'm saying it's more important that you get to go do your extracurricular stuff than concentrate on, on where you're struggling. I can't support that. I could, I could compromise for saying that we could attend practice, because I understand that you can lose skills and things if you, if you, if you out of practice for three weeks. But they've got to understand, they've also got to practice on that academic, and that is crucial for our kids.
Dr. Jaeger.
Yes, Tammy, would you clarify again? I think the point that COVID has as it relates to grading in the classroom, teachers putting in their grades updated, how it impacts the grade of the student. Me having students out for COVID impacted a grade. So say my student was normally a four-point-oh straight-A student, and I called the teacher about it, and it dropped down to a CRD. Not much out, right? But it happens. How, uh, please help explain to the board how this is a different circumstance under COVID in which those grades that you normally expected to see weekly are not what is being reflected due to outages in COVID.
Sure, I, I can tell you that we had a, we have one school that is piloting the program where they're um requiring all uh athletes as well as their uh club groups to meet after-school, and they have an hour set up. And from that point, uh, they check in with all their coaches. Um, if they need to go see a teacher, they can. We have several teachers that go to that site to help, because there's a lot of times there's classes that freshmen take that a teacher could be in a room and work with kids from different activities and sports. But the reality was, things were running pretty smooth until that school hit uh quarantines. And then it was relatively shocking when the kids came back, that just, they just really struggled in that environment, working and completing assignments. So now you've got maybe four classes or five classes with two assignments that have been issued out during that quarantine that all need to be completed. And so we saw, especially with freshmen and sophomore. And I would say that today, when I was busy with athletic directors and asking them to bring, give me as of today what you think uh you would have in the way of students not progressing with it. And then, in other words, they have an F, or they're low on a two-point-oh. And the majority, by far, were freshmen and sophomores. So, and I would say it averaged anywhere from ten to maybe twenty-five. At a school, we had one school with more than that. But what we saw was when the quarantines came in place, the students didn't have the resources to really do the assignment. They weren't engaged. They've been through remote for a long time. And so when they came back, we really needed to be able to connect with them and give them time to get back to the instructors, get back into that, that discipline of going to school and being in class, seeing a teacher, finding out what you need, finding out how to get help. If somebody needs it more, I, I've not met a principal that wouldn't uh try to help find resources for any student that needs more work. But I think the reality was, when we saw three schools go through quarantines at different times, that's when we saw the impact of how they were progressing prior, and then what it was like for them when they came back. And the, I think last year, just losing, you know, that fall season, um, the kids and the parents can, you know, they, they really stress when, when they're quarantined, or, you know, if something's taken away, and we're just trying to keep them consistently a thumb on. And that's why we do the weekly grade checks, so it doesn't get away from us.
And I just wanna clarify one thing in regards to what the amendment is asking. It's specifically related to COVID, and it's not to dismiss that kids should have their academics first. But the reality of it is, not only, I mean, if we're just being completely honest, in some cases, you know, our teachers have a lot going on, and they're not necessarily posting assignments for the kids to access in a timely manner for um them to complete it in order to get their grades up. I can't say that, because I, I have emails from parents who are like, my child was out, and they didn't get an assignment, and for whatever reason. So that is another barrier in some cases. And I think as we navigate through this, this is not asking to amend the policy long-term. I think some of the things that we have to, um, as what we're learning is, we need to build in academic support and um interventions for our students during the school day outside of COVID, because a lot of this is relying on waiting until they fail. Where if they can be on top of things or have access to support and not get into the position of failure, we would be able to more clearly um distinguish failure through, due to COVID versus failure, like I was failing before COVID. And that's a challenge that, that um, as we move forward and look at our schedules in the next year, we do have to make sure that we explicitly build into all of our scoo- student schedules some academic support time during the day, regardless if they have a four-point-oh or um are struggling and may not be passing classes.
I would like to make a mo- uh, a motion that we approve the amended, approve to amend the current district policy through the remainder of the academic school year, where students participate in athletics and activities. Um, I, I would li- like to support this, because I see it firsthand with student athletes. I'm there for the games. I'm there for the moms, Peps, whatever, hearing feedback. And I just want to give our students the ability to, the carrot is being able to play. I saw a student who dropped out of our um schools last night. It was very disheartening. And one thing that we could hopefully get them back is to help give them those resources and support um and listen to the recommendation of our superintendent and sports director.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. I'll open the floor. Ms. Page, I saw you had your hand up.
Yeah. When a kid is out, let's say they've been quarantined, and they're not severely sick. Well, where do these coaches, do these parents call and say, can I get the work that so-and-so is missing, missing? And does the coach follow it up to see if they're doing the work? If some are just at home, and this is not to knock anybody who's severely sick. I get that. But I know some who, they said they were exposed, they were sent home. But I'm just asking, do you all check to see if they're getting the work? And are they doing the work? And are they turning it in? When they come back, do they bring it with them?
I can answer that sometimes our coaches are also quarantined, so contact is different when they're not at school. I can tell you that even some kids are still struggling with remote. Um, yes, when they come back, we find out what assignments aren't due, and we're sitting them down, and we're trying to get that taken care of.
Okay, so for clarity, I wanna be clear. Are you saying it's a lot of coaches that have been infected, and they're at home?
No, I'm saying if a, if a co- if a coach is also quarantined.
Okay, that, that's a possibility.
That's what I was saying, if they are, yeah.
But I'm just saying for the ones who are there.
Sure.
And they got these plans. Are they following up? And then the second part of that, I don't know why there's no continuity, that all the schools wouldn't have the exact same thing. Because if I leave one school and transfer, and we do have a transit group, they move. Why wouldn't, why wouldn't it be that continuity where they're all doing the same thing? So there's no new expectation. I know what the plan is.
This was a discussion this summer where we were looking for, pilot this, and we had one school plan and prepare to pilot that program. Because I think it's significant, as Dr. Stubblefield said, to give, whether they're athletes or kids in activities, some time in the day to, to academically progress outside of the, just their classroom. And it's, it's hard for them to do that when they get home after their practices, their activities they're doing. So this was a way to pilot something, so we can actually look at data watch. It just so happened that when the quarantine occurred, it really gave us a look at how it affected those kids. But yes, our athletic directors and coaches know, they need to let those kids know they need to stay on top, look at their canvas. But if something's not posted, or they don't have connectivity, or I will be honest, we have kids that have just shut down when they get into that mode, then the best thing we can do is when they come back, sit down with them and find out.
I just wanna clarify, because I don't want people to misinterpret, when they are quarantined, it's not remote, it's assignments that they're completing independently. There's not structure, remote, learning, because kids are not zooming into classrooms.
No, no, I get that. I'm just saying.
I just wanted to clarify, because Tammy used remote, and I know that some people will be like, oh, we're doing remote. I just wanted to clarify that currently there are either assignments available. And I also wanna be clear, that is not consistent. I've heard from parents, and we are working on making sure that students are um getting academic work, because in some cases, um, some experiences were, the parents were asking for the work, and it was not provided for a variety of reasons. So I don't want to um make it sound like we are doing that readily, because I know I'll hear from some parents like, oh, no, when my child was out, I didn't have access, and they didn't get it, or the system wasn't working. So we are working through some of those barriers.
Because I, I, I question, this is nice. We say everybody's going to college. I don't think these colleges are doing all this, and you came out of college background. And I'm not saying they don't have compassion, but they expect them to do their work.
College is allowed to do remote. So if a person is im- is not there, we're allowed to do actual remote zoom into the classroom. We're not restricted by the state of Kansas saying that there's no students remote. We give lots of flexibility, so it cannot be compared to college work, because college is totally different. It's on a totally different level than K through twelve as it relates to that. And we know that student athletes, if you're a student athlete, you already are required to go to after-school mentoring, tutoring, monitoring of grades. There's a higher level of accountability for student athletes at a university.
Hey, thank you, Board.
But you're still required to do your work. And if you don't do the work, you don't get to play.
Thank you all. Dr. Nguyen.
Um, Dr. Stubblefield, I guess this is, and Tammy, the, when you're saying uh the plan must contain one or more, so if you do three, we have no idea what that is. If, you know, if, one would think, if number one is what you, you, you are planning as a student support plan, then that would be required.
Sure.
Um, otherwise, you don't, I don't see any accountability. Yeah, I think you've kinda included accountability in your items, your bullet points on number one, but there's no accountability listed on two and three. Secondly, um, one would think, I guess this to Dr. Stubblefield, one would think that the um, the assignments, we already know that quarantine could happen, and I guess my question, my, my statement is, we need to get the tutoring tighter before we start, in my opinion, changing a policy. And if the policy, I think the last time you said it worked relatively successful over the Christmas.
That's correct. We had about three.
Was that two weeks?
We had about three weeks. We had about eight percent.
So then do another three weeks before we change a total policy. Because what Ms. Humphries is saying, you can carry that F all year long. And then that is not what we or you want out of any of our students' activities. But the system is, has, has holes in it, has gaps in it, and a student can end up at the end of the year with as many Fs as they, they can get.
Well, they would end at the first quarter, if they're, this first semester, if they don't pass CASA, they would not be allowed to compete or play at all.
And that's five classes?
No, it's five to seven, or if it's uh four, this would be sixty percent.
Well, what is it?
Well, it depends on if it's a school with full schedule or four.
What is it for, for your athletes, our athletes?
Each high school's different, because some of them are in seven, some of them are in four.
In five hundred, they're different?
Right.
Yeah, members, it's on the paper. Every school can set up their own plan.
But I, but I would like to, to point out, because I, I do agree completely. This is not about making it easier, thinning it. It's about helping kids. But number three would be a situation where maybe someone has specific accommodations, where a principal's involved in working with somebody. It's not the, the real, it's not the one that's everybody's doing. That's a very specific thing. But that is in your policy now. Those three are in the policy as it stands. I just included them, because we do have some variations, depending on the school.
Well, then I would say our policy also is not clear. Current policy is not clear. If, if, and if, if it fluctuates from high school to high school, that's a problem. So one group of students can pass X amount?
No, so it'd be the same percentage of classes you have to pass to meet CASA standards.
No, I'm talking about, you just said at five hundred, it varies from high school to high school.
Different high schools have a different number of classes per day.
Correct.
That kids attend, and that's weighted the same.
Okay.
And that's CASA standard.
Yeah, so CASA standard is typically based off of a seven-period day. So if you have a seven-period day, you have to pass five of seven. If it's an eight-period day, you have to pass, I think, is it six of eight?
Whatever that percentage is.
Yeah. So if some of our high schools have a seven-period day or an eight-period day, or um, if it's a four-by-four block, it's the percentage. So since our high schools are not on the same schedule, it's the, what's dictated by CASA. So that's why it's different. But it's the same percentage classes.
So...
Thank, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. Um, Ms. Smith, I'm gonna go ahead and ask you to do a roll call vote. There was a motion and a second to approve um the recommended proposal to amend the policy. I will remind the Board of, um, that this is the second time that this has come forward. So in practice and process for policy changes, typically we will do a third read on this. So this does not necessarily go into effect immediately. We would have another read of this proposed policy amendment. So in effect, it could give you that extra couple of weeks before it comes back to the Board. So I just wanted to clarify. Mr. Gohin, is that correct? Am I- So I just wanted to clarify, Mr. Gohean, is that correct? Am I stating correctly?
Yes, I mean, the, the Board's practice has been to do, um, initial read, a second read, and then a third final read before adopting policy changes, absent some extingent circumstance. Uh, the Board can depart from that practice if they chose to do so and vote to put a policy in place with less than a, uh, three-read process. But that's, that's the Board's discretion. The practice has been to do, uh, three reads. So if you're going to stay consistent with your practice, it should be three.
Thank you. So Ms. Smith, would you please do a roll call vote?
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
As it reads now, Janie Humphries votes no.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, no.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, no, because it is not consistent and it does not encourage students to perform. No.
Dr. Jaeger?
Dr. Jaeger, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda, um, Board, you'll remember that this has come up to the Board previously. The Diploma Plus Sound Studio, um, would ask if there are questions or, um, if there's a recommendation in front of us.
I just want to, um, share, um, because I did get the email late today and I didn't add it and I can forward it to the Board. I do have an email from Dr. Mosher, um, supporting this with the understanding that KCK, um, Community College, will continue to work with the district to create the program. And once they are up ready to go, we will shift, um, CMSU to KCK. And that is an understanding that, um, throughout the, um, conversations that they've had, um, would be, um, supported by both KCK and the district. And I can forward the email, um, to the Board. But I do have an email. I just got it late this afternoon.
We're able to ask questions?
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Humphries?
I have a question. The Sound Studio that we would build over North Central Office, correct? Is that something that's going to help our Communications Department also? With our TV station and our, and things that we produce, is it going to, could it possibly be an asset for Edwin's department?
Yes, ma'am. Um, the conversations that we had earlier with Communications was, um, wanting to make sure that as we get our students with this particular program, that any, uh, sound engineering and tech, that the students that we have could work on the, uh, video and, uh, s- sound systems that, um, Mr. Merchant and his crew needs for production, that our students could be involved in that as well. And that they also will have use of the, um, equipment if needed.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Clark?
Dr. Stubblefield, the email that you said you received, I just want to make sure I'm following, would the location of the class change? So everything would stay the same, just where the certi-, where the certification, am I using the right word?
The location of the class would change and they would just send an instructor over.
The, it would not change. They would send an instructor over here.
Okay.
Send an instructor over to our facility.
Okay.
Clarification, with that information, would that change the amount that is planned based upon the previous presentation of the outline for the program cost summary?
So I'm not sure what KCKCC would charge for the courses. I don't have that information at this time.
It wouldn't change the cost of the build-out, the tuition potentially.
The tuition cost would probably change, but not the cost of the build-out.
Because my concern is that the build-out of it, and KCK already has it, then we currently send students over to KCKCC to do that without additional funding of us personally spending the money.
They don't.
They don't currently have it, which is why they are given permission to actually move forward with it until they build out the course bonus. They don't currently have the Sound Audio Studio.
Okay, and then a no, a couple of questions. We did receive a couple of emails relating to the CTE, the other programs that asked for funding such, not to this magnitude, but, um, funding for their programs. And they mentioned that their programs were not funded to this magnitude for CTE. Um, so my concern is there are currently CTE educators, people out there who are looking and wanting funding for their projects, yet are not being funded. And we're spending a large amount, uh, on this. So how do we ensure that there's funding for the CTE programs beyond what this line items are? So that students that, um, may not be interested in this area because only a small amount of students are going through versus some of the larger CTE programs?
And so this program is not a CTE program. CTE programs are funded under the Perkins Grant. And so those are federal dollars that we receive. The Sound Engineering Studio is not funded that way. It's not a CTE program. All of our CTE fund, programs are funded through Perkins.
Okay, and my last question is, um, last time it was presented, there were, um, they said that, you know, there was a 90% graduation rate and there were job offers. Have we gotten any additional written requests for people who are looking to hire these students? Would they graduate or be able to provide something, um, in addition to that to secure employment?
No, ma'am. I don't, I did not know that that was a request.
We, we would not have that information because the program has not been approved. So we would not have pursued, um, to go and say we have this program to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Page?
The last time he was here, I asked about prerequisites. And I know most college classes, and I know I've been out a while, but I do know in certain classes, there are certain prerequisites that you have to have. He didn't really give a clear answer. And when we present it, is that in there? Or will they have that? Or is it written somewhere?
We discussed the, I'm sorry.
No, no, I, I'm just saying, did I miss it and?
We discussed the application requirements to get into the program. But we didn't say that students had to have taken certain classes before entering into the program. No, ma'am.
But I'm just saying, it, it just seems that's a lot of money. And that you're not just going to let anybody walk up in there if they're not qualified. You'd have to, there's something they need to have, to me. And he said no, um, but it just didn't come off well.
But there is an application process and the requirements for the application process we detailed in the presentation. So I don't think it could be just anyone. Uh, we talked about a student who has a passion for audio and visual, um, doing this type of work. Um, and then when you look at the students' grades, you look at the students' transcripts, have they taken any audio and tech classes prior to, uh, wanting to be in this program? All of that is taken into consideration with the application.
And transportation?
Yes, ma'am.
How do we get them there? Transportation is an issue.
So the transportation for this program will be just as how we transfer to students to the Tech Center on State Avenue. We have an AM and a PM shift. Buses bring students from their high school to the tech program. Also with the programs that we have in North Central currently, the students from, uh, Tech Impact Cerner are there. And Biomanufacturing, we transport those students from their high school to the site in the morning and in the afternoon.
Dr. Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Um, I'm sure you're familiar with the other correspondence we received that had questions.
Yes, ma'am.
So, um, is there an audio engineering certification listed?
Is there one listed? Where?
Uh, it had to be, I guess, KSDE. Does this certification exist? I guess that's what the first.
It would be considered an industry-recognized credential. Yes, ma'am.
Is it recognized now by the Kansas Department of Education?
I would have to look to make sure. I know that it is considered, and it would be considered in IRC, one of the market value assets that we could use.
Right, okay, so I don't know how to answer that.
Okay.
And you could get back to us.
Yes, ma'am. I can check.
Um, the tuition seems very high for a student. Now, that tuition goes to CMSU?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Did, did, did I overlook where Mr. Macklin's salary is in here?
The salary is not in there because he's paid directly from the university. He would not be on a teacher contract and not employed by KCKPS. So we don't have his salary information. That's between the university and him as an adjunct professor.
So how do you guarantee his time here?
It would be the partnership that we have with UCM.
So do we have an MOU with them?
No, ma'am. We're going visceral first, trying to get approval for the studio.
Okay, so has, has there been any official communication with them?
No, ma'am. We work directly with him.
Okay, let me ask it this way. He's an adjunct professor, Professor of CMSU. This is correct?
You're saying UCM? Is it UCM? I'm, I said.
Yes.
UCM.
Okay.
Central Missouri?
Yes.
It used to be CMSU.
Okay, whatever.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't.
I think Dr. Stubblefield and I are making the same mistake.
Right.
Okay. Warrensburg, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
So, h- help me understand what you just said. The communication's been with him?
The communication has been with, uh, my coordinator, Lauren Clay, has been working with him and the person that supervises him. So we don't have an MOU at this point. We are working with the, to get the studio together. So we have not pursued an MOU. So, and I, I'm trying to unders-, make sure I'm understanding what you're saying.
Let me just tell you, it seems like you got, it's a little backwards. We, you're asking for us, Dr. Stubblefield, to approve $195,000 commitment, right? Uh, 195, first 158 to build and 195 then 1,000. But the only communication has been between Mr. Macklin, Ms. Clay, and somebody at Warrensburg.
And so I don't, I can get that information to you. I don't have that with me today.
Okay, and, but I guess what, you know, it seems like the conversation is, is, is there. I don't question the conversation.
Yes, ma'am.
But I don't understand if there has been a commitment. Now, if we say we're going to give you $3,200 with 60 students, I'm sure they'll say, go ahead. And we'll just have it as an, what, an off-site class, a extended class? I don't know. What, how would they categorize it?
A certificate program.
A certificate program that's at KCKPS.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. It just seems like we should have that commitment first before we approve building a Sound Studio? And then secondly, what, what did you say Dr. Mosher said? Go ahead and spend the money and we'll?
Well, he, what Dr. Mosher said was that because of the Kbor components, he was saying, like, they would not be necessarily ready to go right now. But they can, um, because it's going through CMSU's Workforce Development Office and they have one that they could take the time, um, to do it. And when they're ready to offer it, we will enter into a partnership. I will interject and say, um, one of the things, and I apologize, is on me. I was not clear that we didn't have a MOU. So I would say that in order to make sure we have those components, we can push pause and bring it back um, with an, uh, MOU, um, because if they, whomever we've been speaking with, we would want for the Board to prove to know and understand the components of the MOU. So that would be my recommendation, so we can push pause and bring it back.
Given that information, I'll ask if we, the Board, to table this conversation. Please continue to send any questions you may have, um, to Dr. Stubblefield. Um, and we will bring this back once we have a little more clarity and information. Thank you.
Um, the next re-, four items, um, were shared. And I don't think, um, there were lots of questions around them. The first one is the approval of the Lake Shore Class Consultant. Um, and Dr. Cook is here. And we will be asking the Board to approve, um, item D, if there, if there's no question at this time.
I'd make a motion to approve the Lake Shore Contract.
You made a motion in second.
Motion in second. Um, Ms. Smith, are there any questions, discussion? Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Jaeger?
Dr. Jaeger, yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you.
The next item is the Letters training. We did, this one was on a previous board meeting, not the last one. But what we're asking the Board to approve tonight is for us to pay for those elementary staff and, um, others who are not covered under what the, uh, State Department is paying for. So if there are no questions, we're just asking the Board to approve that.
So move.
Okay.
Moved in seconded. Questions, discussion? Dr. Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Dr. Stubblefield, is there any, um, checks along the way? I mean, what's the, how does this play out? Do they get trained?
I'm waving Darcy to come forward.
Come on down, Darcy.
Yeah, um, Darcy can probably answer that better. It is in Lindsay. But there are specific components that are embedded in it and she can talk.
I guess the real question is, when do we see return? Not return on the dollar, but return on the delivery.
Okay.
Of, of actually teaching how to read.
Of teaching, okay. So our, our timeline is that we would start with Letters October 13th. And we would complete two of the unit modules this year. So what that means is, after each module, that pedagogy can be automatically, um, used within the classroom. And our instructional coaches will be kind of that check-in piece for us. Um, principals are getting the same training, so when they're doing their walkthroughs, when they're doing evaluations, we should have these conversations, um, in terms of what is it we're seeing in the classroom? And then, um, you know, as we continue down the road of our resource adoption, which, you know, is this year, um, once we compare a structured literacy-based resource with the pedagogy they're getting, it's going to be an easier check and balance for us. But, but with Letters, the nice thing about Letters is our teachers can start using those strategies with any program we have. Whether that's HEGARDY, whether that's FMP, whether that's either Open Court or CKLA, whichever one they choose to go with. But it's really about our instructional leaders of the building, our instructional coaches, district staff getting out into classrooms during the phonemic awareness and phonics components, um, of the, of the master schedule. So like oftentimes, when I look at a building master schedule, I can see when a specific teacher is teaching word study. I'd want to go in and I'd want to look for that word study component so that I'm seeing that the, the strategies and the pedagogy we're all learning together is being used in the classroom with our kiddos. And the other check on that would be, we should be seeing our data move on FastBridge, which is our universal screener. So once we are, are embedding these strategies in our core instruction, our data, sh- we should see that start to move in those subtests around phonemic awareness and phonics.
Okay, so let me back up. So thank you.
Yeah.
Let me back up to the part where you said, they can use, start using the strategies. Have you, have you, for lack of a better word, directed them to start using the strategies?
We are going to do a launch with them. With the launch will come those, the, I hate to use the word expectation because to me, the instructional leader of the building, the principal, is going to be that check and balance. But yes, you know, our, our messaging from curriculum and instruction, our messaging in our district-level leadership team, our messaging with principals will be, this is the science of reading. And we need to be seeing evidence of that in classrooms, in professional learning community conversations, in our data. And then, you know, we're working on the multi-tiered system of support right now at TAZN. And part of that is using a protocol for us to be able to look at our data and have some critical conversations, celebrating the things that we see, but asking those critical questions of if we're not seeing our data move, what's our why? And do we need to go back and do some work around, um, the strategies again? Is it the resource? Like, we have some, some questions we need to look at once we start diving into that training and seeing it in action in the classroom. and seeing it in action in the classroom.
Okay, my just concern is, is here we are and we'll, we are going to, you know, get, get back to our handbook. We are evaluating at the end. But if you haven't told them clearly at the start of it, then it's not clear. And so those, those expectations, if they're not written down, are just out there, in my opinion. So if, if, you know, Dr. Stubblefield, if you don't, if you don't make it clear that you expect them to do this, and we already had the conversation of, you already said your principals are expected to do this, well, past practice, they don't. You just said some teachers don't grade papers. So, I mean, unless, unless it's clear in, in, in a memo form or whatever, I don't, I don't, I don't see the accountability.
Yeah, and we can make it clear and also outline the expectations at the start of the training. Like after each model, what are the look fours? And we can build that into, through our walkthrough tools and the feedback. And also make it clear for with our ILS, when they're visiting with principals, what are those things that they should be seeing as evidence? And then look at, you know, each module, what is focused on? We can drill down into the FastBridge components to see where we should see the movement.
And, and you know, letters comes with a registration component where, like I'll be a district, like a district license holder, if you will, where I can actually go in and I'll be able to see every teacher in every building and who has engaged in which module of learning. So that's another check and balance for us. If we see that there are, you know, groups of teachers or individual teachers that are struggling getting through some of the content, then those are conversations as the district level team, as a CNI department, we can go support to find out, how can we help? What's our why of maybe, you know, struggling with some of that content? But we can actually tell in the letters database where teachers are in their learning. And we're really going to try to, you know, Lindsay Schneider, our Director of Professional Development, has a great schedule set up so that it's pretty explicit where we need to be and when in the professional development calendar. So that piece at least should be a little bit easier to track because it's laid out pretty explicitly in the calendar and we'll have this ability to go in and see where people are in their modules.
So thank you. Thank you, Dr. Stubble.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, roll call vote, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Winn.
Dr. Winn, yes.
Dr. Jaeger.
Dr. Jaeger, yes.
Thank you.
The next item for approval is the DigiCoach walkthrough tool. And we're asking the board to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, questions? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Winn.
Dr. Winn, yes.
Dr. Jaeger.
Dr. Jaeger, yes.
Thank you.
And the final item for approval is the Microsoft Identity Manager. We're asking for approval from the board of that item as well.
So moved.
Okay.
Moved and seconded, questions? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Shonda Bette.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
I'm sorry, Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Winn.
Dr. Winn, yes.
Dr. Jaeger.
Dr. Jaeger, yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes, thank you. Next, on our agenda, we are at executive session. Dr. Stubblefield, if you want to leave staff.
So any staff, it's the first one negotiations?
Yes.
So any staff that's not involved with negotiations or personnel issues, you are free to leave.
Entertaining motion. Thank you, staff, for joining us tonight. Appreciate all of you and your work. Entertaining motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of pursuant to negotiations, teacher contract for 20 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
And seconded, Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Winn.
Dr. Winn, yes.
Dr. Jaeger.
Dr. Jaeger, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to come back into open session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen. Dr. Jaeger. Thank you.
Thank you. We're back in open session. Would entertain a motion to go into executive recess into executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel for 20 minutes going in at 8:55.
So moved.
Second.
Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen. Dr. Jaeger. Thank you.
Thank you. We're back in open session. Would entertain a motion to go into executive recess into executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel for 20 minutes going in at 8:55.
So moved.
Second.
Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen. Dr. Jaeger. Thank you.
Thank you. We're back in open session. Would entertain a motion to go into executive recess into executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel for 20 minutes going in at 8:55.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen. Dr. Jaeger. Thank you.
Thank you. We're back in open session. Would entertain a motion to go into executive recess into executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel for 20 minutes going in at 8:55.
So moved.
Second.
Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen. Dr. Jaeger. Thank you.
Thank you. We're back in open session. Would entertain a motion to go into executive recess into executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel for 20 minutes going in at 8:55.
So moved.
Second.
Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen. Dr. Jaeger. Thank you.
Thank you. We're back in open session. Would entertain a motion to go into executive recess into executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel for 20 minutes going in at 8:55.
Open session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Back in open session. Entertaining motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma for five minutes going in at 9:20.
Moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Back in open session. Entertaining motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma for five minutes going in at 9:20.
Moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Thank you.
Open session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Back in open session. Entertaining motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma for five minutes going in at 9:20.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Back in open session. Entertaining motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma for five minutes going in at 9:20.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Back in open session. Entertaining motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma for five minutes going in at 9:20.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Back in open session. Entertaining motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma for five minutes going in at 9:20.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Back in open session. Entertaining motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma for five minutes going in at 9:20.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Back in open session. Entertaining motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma for five minutes going in at 9:20.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Back in open session. Entertaining motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma for five minutes going in at 9:20.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Back in open session. Entertaining motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma for five minutes going in at 9:20.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Back in open session. Entertaining motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma for five minutes going in at 9:20.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Back in open session. Entertaining motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma for five minutes going in at 9:20.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Back in open session. Entertaining motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma for five minutes going in at 9:20.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Back in open session. Entertaining motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma for five minutes going in at 9:20.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Back in open session. Entertaining motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma for five minutes going in at 9:20.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Back in open session. Entertaining motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma for five minutes going in at 9:20.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Back in open session. Entertaining motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma for five minutes going in at 9:20.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Back in open session. Entertaining motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma for five minutes going in at 9:20.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Back in open session. Entertaining motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma for five minutes going in at 9:20.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Back in open session. Entertaining motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma for five minutes going in at 9:20.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Back in open session. Entertaining motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma for five minutes going in at 9:20.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Back in open session. Entertaining motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma for five minutes going in at 9:20.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Back in open session. Entertaining motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma for five minutes going in at 9:20.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Back in open session. Entertaining motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma for five minutes going in at 9:20.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Back in open session. Entertaining motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma for five minutes going in at 9:20.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Back in open session. Entertaining motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma for five minutes going in at 9:20.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Back in open session. Entertaining motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma for five minutes going in at 9:20.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Back in open session. Entertaining motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma for five minutes going in at 9:20.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Back in open session. Entertaining motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma for five minutes going in at 9:20.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Back in open session. Entertaining motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma for five minutes going in at 9:20.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Back in open session. Entertaining motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma for five minutes going in at 9:20.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Back in open session. Entertaining motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma for five minutes going in at 9:20.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen. Dr. Yeager.
Dr. Yeager, yes.
Thank you.
Back in open session. Thank you, everybody. Sorry for keeping you so late. Have a good evening. This meeting is adjourned.